Wayne, are we good?
Yes.
Thank you. Good morning. It's the mission of Big Walnut Local Schools to inspire and guide each student to his or her maximum potential, and I'd like to call this meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jeremy, would you mind calling the role, please?
Mr. Crowe?
Here.
Mrs. Dorish?
Here.
Mr. Fuji?
Here.
Mrs. Lee?
Here.
Mr. Schneider?
Here.
And that brings us to item six in the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to start this morning with just spending a little bit of time to continue to get questions on our Centero Mental Health Services, and I know we've had a board member who had some concerns and asked if we have Centero present. So I brought in a few folks to speak today. First up, we have, there she is, Dr. Allison Fagan. Allison's going to be sharing some information from her professional expertise in terms of the importance of mental health and the availability of services. And then after Dr. Fagan, we're going to hear from Deanna Brant from the Delaware Morrow Mental Health Recovery Services Board. They're actually the employing agency of Centero, so she's going to talk through that contract, how they hire and evaluate Centero. We have Ms. Julie Rinaldi, who is the CEO of Centero, who can speak to their organization. And then I've also asked Mrs. Laura Lawrence, who is our former Director of Student Services. There's been a lot of comments about how we didn't vet Centero. So I just kind of want to put that to rest with letting Laura talk about her role with that as our former director. And then at that point, if the board has any additional questions, we can answer those, and I would hope then that we could be done with this topic. So with that, I'd like to invite Dr. Fagan to come forward, please, to share your podium.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's an honor to speak with you this morning. My name's Dr. Allison Fagan. Many in the community know me as Allison, and I like it that way. But let me tell you a little bit about the doctor part before I speak to the content of what I want to share with you. I'm a psychologist. I have a bachelor's degree from Westgate University, Middletown, Connecticut, 1982. I have a master's in educational policy and leadership from that little place called The Ohio State University. And then a PhD in psychology from Ohio State also. I graduated from Ohio State with that doctorate in 1996, and I've been licensed as a psychologist since 1998. I think I know something about mental health. I work in the community. I have a private practice now in Westerville. Prior to that private practice, I worked in college mental health, in student counseling centers. So the students we take and leave from here and who happen to go on to college would be in my office. And I can tell you, in the years from when I started in college mental health to my most recent position in the mid-2000s, the severity of presenting concerns was astronomical. And that wasn't just an Ohio-based thing, that's a national phenomenon. So those are my credentials. Let me talk for a second about the seriousness of the mental health crisis. I am not going to flood you with statistics. You can look them up yourself. They're all over the place. Nationwide Children's Hospital has an incredible campaign called "On Their Sleeves." If you haven't seen it, it is heart-wrenching. They're pictures of children who are struggling with mental health issues. In Ohio and nationally, one in five children, school-aged children, one in five, is struggling with a mental health diagnosis. Take a second and picture one of our classrooms. Five of those children, whether it's depression, anxiety, ADHD, a behavioral disorder of some sort, Tourette's Syndrome, or all kinds of other mental health concerns. That's what's going on in our classrooms. The other statistic I want to share with you is an Ohio-based statistic that is also true nationally. The number-one cause of death in young people ages 10 to 18 is accidents. Number two, suicide. I don't like those numbers. I wish those things weren't true. Believe me, but they are true. That's what we're dealing with. The other thing we're dealing with is the extraordinary lack of mental health services, not just in Delaware County, not just in central Ohio, but throughout the state and nationally. Just this week, me personally, in my little practice, have had to say, "I'm terribly sorry, but I cannot start working with you," to seven people who are reaching out to me in distress. I reached out to colleagues, albeit informally, it's not a formal poll, and said, "I'm looking to place," hypothetically, "I'm looking to place a child," because child psychologists are a specialization. "Does anybody have any openings, regardless of health insurance status?" Nada. No one in central Ohio could see that child this week. That's pretty bad. I've heard concerns in the community that, well, that's all understandable and bad, but parents should just take care of it. It's weren't that easy. Sometimes parents don't know what's going on, because children don't always talk to their parents. Some children, like myself, talk to trusted teachers. I'm here today because of Fred Brant, Mr. Kennedy, who was my band teacher, and Mrs. Andrews, who was, I'm not sure if she was a guidance counselor or a therapeutic counselor. Those people rescued me. My mom had no idea. And I am not unique in this way. And the reason my mom had no idea is because of the fact that she was going through so much, and I didn't want to be another source of stress on her. Kids do that all the time. Another reason why parents can't just take care of it is sometimes parents are the problem. Whether we're talking about addiction or domestic violence or having a depressed parent. Sometimes parents are the problem. Another reason why parents can't take care of it is they may not have the ability to physically take their child out of school and transport them to a therapist's office. Some therapists, some psychologists, some counselors have some evening hours. But many parents have to work. And to pull a child out of school is a problem for the child. For the parent, for a one-hour appointment, that's a two-hour chunk out of their workday, when you add commuting time. And now let's talk about the issue of access in terms of having health insurance. Someone's got to pay for this, right? It is required in Ohio. It's called parity, that mental health services are covered. But it doesn't mean you can find a provider. And if you're a family that's taking advantage of services or needs to use services through Medicaid, no private therapists that I know, I'm sure there are some, accept those reimbursement rates. It's 30 bucks on the hour. We can't afford to. The other thing that's true? Mental health impairments affect children's ability to learn. How do you learn if you're sitting in a classroom and you're worried about your deployed father? This is a true story from someone in our community. I'm not going to share names or details to protect the family's privacy, but I was talking to this mother yesterday. The children were school-aged children, elementary-aged children. The father was being deployed. The family was worried, understandably, about a lot of things. How it would affect the family, what was going to happen to Dad, where's Dad going? All of those things. The parent attempted to find services in the community and was unable to find satisfaction with community resources. One of our teachers suggested to this parent that she take advantage of the Centero services available within the school district. The girls did great. They learned tools to cope with the stress. They had an outlet to discuss their feelings. They learned how to manage their stress. And they just had a person to talk to, who wasn't Mom, about what was going on. And these girls were able to talk to this counselor with the counselor understanding the student, the girls' school context, the environment within which they live and work, because school is their work, right? I asked this mom what she thinks would have happened if the girls hadn't gotten services. She said, "Well, you know, it's hard to know that, but I do know the girls had a very successful year." That's one story. There are others. The other thing I've heard in the community, that's a little off my, getting a little out of my lane here, but I'm going to address it, is that specifically Centero should not be given the contract because Centero has a sex education curriculum. And that would be like the fox guarding the hen house. Well, that's, makes no sense to me for two reasons. Three, actually. The first is that sex education curriculum was never, ever offered in Big Walnut, nor any place in Delaware County. It was a Franklin County curriculum only. Second, Centero stopped offering that curriculum to focus its primary services on the mental health services. And third has to do with the metaphor itself. Any single prescriber, be it a certified nurse practitioner or a physician, can write a prescription for birth control pills. Does that mean you don't take your 14-year-old daughter to see the doctor? Of course not. Professionals know their boundaries and they'll have to stay in their way. Thank you.
All right. Can I have Deanna Brant come up next, please? Again, Deanna's with us from the Delaware Morrow Mental Health and Recovery Services Board.
It is, and I acknowledge that openly. It's quite an acronym. Tell me when I'm ready. I can start talking? All right, thank you, and thank you for having me. And I'm actually here to talk about the administrative aspect of how we contract with providers as a board. And I want to say a couple of things. First, thanks for having me. And secondly, I'm not going to be nearly as interesting as that, because I'm going to review our procedure for you. I want to talk a little bit about something that's the most boring topic ever, the Ohioirvise Code. So most of you probably know that boards were established in the Ohioirvise Code. And part of our process for how we screen and allocate funds to providers is dictated in the Ohioirvise Code. Our board has two initial thresholds when we consider providers for an allocation from our board. First is that they be certified for the service for which they'd like funding from the Ohio Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services. And believe it or not, not all providers are certified by OMS. That gives us some statewide oversight of the quality of care, their fiscal reporting, their compliance from the Ohio Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services. The second thing that we look at for treatment services specifically is the national accreditation. Shortage that we would have to look at for-profit entities, I would never rule it out, but right now, our focus has been on solely, for the 25-year history I can account for, not-for-profit provider agreements. The next thing we look at is local needs. So the Ohioirvise Code has a Section 340032 that dictates what the essential elements are of a behavioral health continuum of care in all communities in Ohio. Every county has a board. And so we have to look at how that application for services fits into that continuum of care. Do we have a gap in those services here? Do we need it, and if we need it, at what level? The ORC goes on to talk about what boards can look at in terms of factors for review. Cost-effectiveness, quality, and I'm going to speak to quality separately in a moment, because that's really dictated by each individual board. And we have an entire program for how we assess the quality of services that are provided. And then I said, "cost elements." So one of the things that the ORC says is that a board can have its own utilization review process for how we analyze the work of a specific provider that we contract with. And we have one. It's, and I think, you know, if you could ask any of our providers, we have 12 major providers, and then we have a number of smaller, what we call, community partnerships. Our utilization review is rigorous. I'm going to use that word, and I think that they would use it, too. We look at their board governance, their board meeting schedule, their board membership, their board meeting minutes. We look at their fiscal reports to ensure their fiscal stability over time. And when you think about what I said earlier about how we have to be sure that we can maintain continuity of care, fiscal stability matters to that. We have an outcomes reporting system that's partly software-based that analyzes programs over time in four specific areas. Effectiveness, does it work? Are people getting better? Are students getting better? Are families seeing the results they'd like to see? Efficiency, are all of the folks who need help able to get it? And I'm summarizing, thumbnail sketch of what the words mean, but there are all sorts of documents attached to this. Access, do people have to wait for care? Because they shouldn't. To Allison's point, they shouldn't. And so we measure how long children, adults, families wait for care in specific programs. And then satisfaction. Were they happy with the outcome? And it doesn't mean that the person that they worked with necessarily told them what they wanted to hear. How you measure satisfaction really isn't about that. It's more about, do you think this program will be beneficial? Would you refer your friends to it? Would you refer other family members in this specific program? Now, board-funded providers reapply every year. We do not have auto renewals. We don't have evergreen contracts. They go through this process each and every year. And I will say, the second piece of that is, we are perpetually, as a board, looking for other providers around capacity, around bandwidth, around gaps in that continuum of care. This is not a system where there are legacy providers who don't have to go through this process and are simply rolled over each year. We make them go through this application process, starting in December of the year that starts July 1st of the following year. So that application, it's comprehensive. It looks at their strategic plan, how it aligns with our strategic plan, whether or not the services they provide are for one of our priority populations. Our first priority population in our strategic plan are children with behavioral health issues. So of course, that would be a focus for us. We look at whether or not they use evidence-based practices. Has the science said, in clinical research said, these programs work? And then, of course, we look comprehensively at the result of all of those outcomes measurements that we do. So are boards allowed to consider all of those factors? Cost, quality of care, cost effectiveness, continuity of care, and last, performance on prior contracts? So we use that to dictate how we make these recommendations. So all of this information, all of it, is given to the board staff, to our board finance committee. We also have a planning committee. And then typically, in late spring of the end of the fiscal year, goes to the full board for consideration for renewal for the following year. So have we looked at other providers? We have. That's our job, right? To always have options in place. Couple things. And Ohio has some new child-based initiatives coming out for which it made sense for us to look for additional support in providing some of those services. If you haven't heard, you know, you probably have Ohio Rise and some of the MRSS, some of those programs. We have yet to find a provider for school-based services with this bandwidth who can provide services across both counties and all schools that were certified by OMS for school-based services, which is our first threshold that they have to meet. That had outpatient capacity to accept any student or family who might need more support than what happens within the school system. And last, that was panelled for private insurance. And you probably ask yourself, maybe you do. Why does that matter in a school-based setting? It doesn't matter here. But for families who are referred on, who have private coverage, it reduces local tax burden if that provider can then bill that insurance. And that's important to us. Now, I'm going to speak briefly to those outcomes measures and how Centero has performed on those. So in our system, you know, we're not aspirational in the sense that we expect 100% success in all of these measures. You know, we're dealing with humans and human nature on both sides of the equation, the provider and the recipient, right? So we set what we think are reasonable standards, but with some stretch for the providers to always be improving the quality of the care they provide. And Centero, on those measures, has performed beautifully. And I will say this. CARF, who is their national accreditation organization, actually suggested to us considering this model of service for replication nationally. So we will continue to do our due diligence as I've described, and there's a lot more involved in this, that we can certainly have conversation about if anyone would like to. Be happy to do that. But that's how our process works. Thank you. Sure. Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Julie Rinaldi, who is the CEO of Centero.
Good morning. Thank you all for inviting me. I want to thank Dr. Fagan and Deanna. I've never met Dr. Fagan before, so thank you for your kind words and support. So I'm here, I'm going to talk about our agency a little bit, and then I'm going to address some of the concerns that we've heard that have been out in the community that I hope that I can address and put to rest. I'm Julie Rinaldi, I'm the CEO of Centero. I've been with the organization a little over 12 years. I have been in the mental health field for 36 years. This is the first time I've ever had to stand before anyone and have to defend our agency. But I'm going to do it, because what we do is so important. Our organization, Centero, has been in business, we're a nonprofit, for 43 years. If you were wondering what Centero means, it's the Greek word for support. And it really, our board decided that that was a good way to really describe the services that we provide. I think you know that we provide behavioral healthcare services along the spectrum, so we work with little, little people up to folks who are older adults. So we have the full, comprehensive span of agency services. We are in good standing with all of our funders, with all of our accreditation agencies. Deanna described how their board accredits us and certifies us and contracts with us. I think that there's no doubt that our organization is well thought of. We have a very good reputation. And I'm here because there's been some concerns raised about our organization. I do want to address those. We did have a sexual health program in Franklin County for about 17 years that was funded by the Franklin County Adam H. Board. We've provided services in middle school and high schools. About a year and a half ago, we were alerted by a parent in the Hilliard District that there was, that's one of our, I guess, links to some information and resources that we had shared had been corrupted. We were horrified. We were completely horrified. We took everything down immediately. All of the links, everything, we took down. We shut everything down. We worked with the school district, we worked with the parents, and we decided that we were going to shut everything down, because it was horrifying and we would never, ever have taught anything that was, like, in those links. So since then, there was a group afterwards who created a video, which some of you have probably seen, that uses our logo against, never asked us to use our logo, never asked permission to use our logo, accuses us of teaching children, middle school children, how to be human, go into human trafficking. I mean, that is egregiously false. We would never, ever, ever do anything like that. There's all kinds of false accusations out there. There's videos that have been created. Nobody has ever, ever come to me and asked me whether any of this is true. It is blatantly false information. And I'm sorry that so much energy and time has been placed in this, with this false information, because it's blatantly false. Blatantly false. We would never, ever do anything like that. We're professionals. We care about children. We would never, ever do anything like that. We were so horrified that we went to the Ohio Attorney General's Office and met with their Office of Human Trafficking, because we wanted to make sure that they knew we would never do anything like that. And they've been very supportive and very, of us, and understood the situation. So they've kind of shut some things down as well. But we're horrified. I'm horrified as a professional. I'm a former educator, I have my master's degree in education. This has been horrifying for our organization. We haven't been able to protect ourselves or defend ourselves against these attacks, but they're all lies, all of them. And I want to make sure this community and other communities know that. Nothing that has been stated is true. So, you know, people can make videos, people can steal people's logos, people can say false things against you that are just untrue. It's amazing. We're here to protect children. We do the exact opposite. We teach children how not to get involved in human trafficking, how to be safe, you know, how to use social media safely. So we do the exact opposite. So it's just been amazing to sit back and have to watch this, these attacks. It's just blatantly false.
Could you speak to, I know we met in a room and talked about, there was a CD that was passed out here in 2013 in another district. Do you want to address that at all?
You know, that, again, the only thing that we can think of, and thank you for mentioning it. The only thing that we can think of is that was, again, you can take things out of context. And from what I understand, it was, the contents of the CD, again, it was taken out of context. The only thing we can think of is that, is that it was a list of things that might be myths that, like, eighth-grade boys think can, they can use to, for, you know, safe sex or something like that. I think it was taken out of context. And again, I'm not even sure if it was our staff or if it was our program, so. No, I just want to make sure folks know that we would never do anything to hurt a child or hurt anybody of any age. We're here to protect. So thank you for your time and thank you for your support. And we love working in this district. In fact, we've increased our staffing here and the referrals are going up exponentially. So the need is there. Thank you.
Laura?
Good morning. As the board knows, I have retired after 42 years in education, and I still call this my district and these are my kids. And I'm pleased to be able to be here this morning to talk to you just a little bit about the history of where we are with mental health within our district of Big Walnut. When I arrived nine years ago now, we had one district mental health specialist working with all students within all of our buildings. Shortly after that, within a couple of years, we had, are starting to decide how to use our Title I grant money. This is historically used with our lower socioeconomic students and our buildings based on free and reduced lunch numbers. Basically academic reading and math materials that could be used to help those students be more successful in the classroom. However, we couldn't supplant or use materials that we were using in our other buildings within those, the buildings. And at that point, it was Souders and Big Walnut Elementary School. But we realized when we were doing our planning that we didn't need more academic materials. We had students who were struggling in the classroom with learning due to mental health concerns, their family situations, social skill concerns. We had no outlet way to help the students in those areas. So we determined that some of our students needed mental support health during the school day in order for them to be successful in the classroom. This had never been done through the federal grant funds before. We reached out to them in our proposal and asked if this is a way that we could use the money. They said, we don't know, we'll find out. And we were very pleased to find out that we did receive approval, that we could contract with Ohio Guidestone at that time for the use of that grant money. Again, never been done. They said, yes, it will impact learning, go ahead and do that. Students at Souders and BWI at that time received some small group services, one-on-one services in that first year. And then the second year, Harrison Street also qualified for services. So we had clinicians from Ohio Guidestone within those three elementary buildings. So the next year, the high school and middle school are saying, hey, we've got kids who have needs, we want supports for them also. Is there something that we could do to bring some of those mental health services to the, to our secondary students? At that time, Justin Plummer had been with Ohio Guidestone, working with elementary students, and we were able to bring him on board to work with our middle school and high school students, and he shared his time between those two buildings. We were able to still use grant money for the elementary buildings in order to provide services for those students. However, you've got two buildings who were left out of that picture then. GRE had no outside supports, and Big Walnut Intermediate School had no supports. And at that time, Delaware Moro Mental Health Service, or the board, did have the grant for providing mental health services within the schools. And we reached out to them and found out that they would place a mental health clinician free of charge within our district to help support student learning. So we immediately placed them at our two buildings that had no supports, GRE and BWI, and we had one clinician who worked between those two buildings, two and a half days within each building. It was at that time then that Justin and I, during a spring or summer, I can't remember, I think it was before the end of the school year, we met directly with the personnel with Centero to talk about our specific needs in Big Walnut, what we were looking for in our clinicians, how we envisioned that working. They worked very closely with us as we identified what kind of personnel we wanted, working with our children, and what we were hoping to get out of that, out of their working with us. And they were very accommodating at finding great people who had self-initiative, a drive to reach out to students, and had great rapport with our students. This past year, Justin did a great job coordinating and overseeing the services between Ohio Guidestone and Centero, since both of them were within our district. At that time, they had been in separate buildings, though. We wanted to make a change to that so that we had prevention services, which were being provided by Centero, and our early intervention focus that could be provided by Ohio Guidestone. And we then looked at a model where we had clinicians from both of those, Centero and Ohio Guidestone, within all of our buildings, based on student need. So it no longer was determined by what building you went to and who came, who, who worked with you, if you were identified as a student needing help and support. So the goal has been to assess a student's needs, provide short-term supports and counseling, either small group or individually. Both of these services refer our families to outside services if continued support or treatment is necessary. We have so many students and families right now receiving the short-term and long-term care through the model that's been developed in Big Walnut. Justin, Sonia, the social worker, Ohio Guidestone and Centero clinicians are all working so well together. Justin's coordinating the program and reporting to Ross, who then oversees the program. But we have students now who are able to participate successfully, learn every day in the classroom, based on the services that we're providing them. I am so proud of this district for what they've done in stepping up and looking at the mental health needs of our kids, and I certainly hope that that continues.
All right. With that, I'd like to open up if the board has any additional questions after hearing our four speakers that they can address. I can have them come up if so. Do you have any additional questions?
I'm sorry, I have a hard time hearing that there. I think other folks can hear me.
I think that I'm referring to a document that was provided to the board a while back in reference to services that are.
Oh, there it is.
See, it wasn't me. I was worried. Here we go, third time's going to be a winner here. I'm referring to a document that was provided to the members of the board in reference to services that Centero provides to our district and our students. And in that document, it really talks about the types of services that we use them for now, and I'm going to specifically read, "For school-based services, areas of focus are worry, sadness, loss of family member, emotional regulation, which is absolutely an educational term, executive functioning, and social skills." I don't see sex education in this.
True.
So in, in the conversations, in the concerns, again, and I think Dr. Fagan brought it up, the Fox and the Hen House conversations, the topics that this organization utilizes for us has to do with that list.
Absolutely. That has never, sex has never been a part of conversations that I've had in my eight years that I was in the district.
Thanks. And then the other question that I have, and I think I heard this before, but I just want to make sure that I totally understand it. So as clear as I can be. And Centero doesn't work with our students in one-on-one situations or any situation without a parent consent or parent conversation prior to the dialogue.
Absolutely. There's a whole referral process that goes in from school personnel, either principals, teachers, counselors. And definitely, there is a whole process where parents are notified, give approval before the clinician ever works with a student.
Okay, thank you again.
I have a quick question. I think we've, this information's been shared, but can somebody remind me, how many students and families have taken advantage of the services we've offered within the district, you know, for the past year, for example? How many students are we serving?
I think this year, we're just under 100 right now with, I think, 10 referrals that are pending. So it typically picks up as the year continues. So it's pretty typical. I think we've been up to as much as 140.
Yeah, and if I can, I don't have the exact number, I apologize.
And Ross may, I don't know if Ross has that either. He spoke a couple of meetings ago, and again, just kind of get Laura with more of the history.
However, there has always been a waiting list for students who want to see clinician. And that's what we're trying to do. Look at those needs, provide some short-term services for students, refer them out for outside counseling so that can be continued so we can get other students in to work with our clinicians at school.
And then from what Ms., what Dr. Fagan shared is that in most cases, those individuals would not be able to find immediate services outside of the district.
No, it's not there. And it's even harder for when we're referring those services. But if that school-based service is there to start with, it's easier to get in than for those outside services.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I had a couple of questions for Deanna, if she wouldn't mind coming back up, please. Of course, you would be about the process questions.
Perhaps I'm guilty. So just quickly, can you talk about which schools in Delaware and Moro County are using Centero? Are you aware of that?
All the school districts do. Because of, you know, both the fact that schools have other options, such as Guidestone here, and because of capacity issues, they're not in every building, but they're contracted through us for every single school district, public school district, for us. And if, if I may, can I respond to, to your question earlier? We have never been asked to, nor is funding for a sex education curriculum within our strategic priorities in terms of services we would fund. In the whole history I could look at, we have never funded a program such as that. So, you know, it was, as duly described, limited to Franklin County and not something that has ever been under our purview, nor is it in any future consideration, not part of our strategic plan.
No, thank you. And Deanna, please understand the reason for that question is, is looking at the 12 organizations that fall under the umbrella. And having heard the concerns now from the community around the topic, I just wanted to make sure that as it relates to the vetting process and the work that you do here, that wasn't within that scope.
Correct. And that document you have was provided by me. And those services described are what we fund Centero to provide across those eight school districts. And it varies from district to district, depending on what their needs are, but it's within that scope.
Thank you.
So I guess that's the last question that I had, and as you talk through some of the measures that you do to evaluate providers, I heard you mention a quality component as well as a, if I'm mischaracterizing, let me know, but like a customer satisfaction component, if I heard you correctly. So in either of those two measures that you have, have you ever received a complaint from someone using Centero about their children or family members being indoctrinated or being coerced in some form or another in terms of their beliefs or values in the course of the care they've provided?
We have not. And I, I want to say, no provider or system is perfect. That's why we have a client rights system in Ohio. So if there are issues like that, we as the board are the client rights officer for behavioral health services within our board area. There are other mechanisms too, but we're the statutory one. We have never received any information as a complaint, a grievance, a concern directly from a person in the community.
Have you received any similar complaint of any topic of any other provider that's currently working with Big Walnut schools?
I'm not sure what you're asking me.
So basically, the same question for anybody else that you've helped us with, whether it's Ohio Guidestone or anyone else?
We have not.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President, Ohio, but Ohio Guidestone's not one of the...
I'm sorry. I just meant other providers that they may be contracting with us. I misspoke on the name.
They serve as support for complaints.
Correct. What I really just wanted to hear is, that's the thing I hear, is that Centero's coercive, Centero is shaping the values of the, of the students in our community. I guess what I just heard from the, the board is that that's never been a complaint from anyone that's received those services. And I'm also hearing, not from any other provider that may have worked with the district, that the board has coordinated.
I was confused, thank you.
That's okay. Now, I may have not have, may not have stated it very clearly. Are there any other questions?
No, I don't have any questions. I, I just want to say I really appreciate everybody coming out and, and speaking today and providing all this information.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we're going to move on to our Health Commissioner, Sheila Hittelson. She's here today. She's going to share just kind of an update with where we are with things. We, and I'll kind of tie this, Mark's getting her slides pulled up. I'll tie this to the next item on here, which is our Pandemic Response Committee. So we were asked by the board to reconvene that committee, which we were able to do on Tuesday night. So huge thank you to all the folks who came out for that, as well as our, our two board members who represent on that committee, Mr. Fuji and Mrs. Lee, appreciate you attending as well. Had some great conversations. We've compiled the feedback that we got from that group, sent it out last night to the group, and looking for a couple of folks to come in and share that with the board. So it can also obviously be shared with the public as we stream the meeting. So we are planning on putting that on the agenda for next week. And in the meantime, I asked Sheila to come in and share. So she's going to share the data. She's actually updated a couple of slides since she talked to the committee on Tuesday night, but this is very similar data to what she shared then with a couple of updates. So again, welcome to Sheila. I know we've talked a lot about working with the Delaware Public Health District over the last 20 months. For you, I think we started to get involved more in March, but she's been working on COVID since January. So big thank you to Sheila and her team. I've shared with the board before, but just a reminder, and I think this is amazing, that we have met as a group with all the superintendents and school nurses weekly since this started in March, with few exceptions. We've probably only canceled five, maybe, in that entire time, if that. So, if that, maybe two, three. So weekly meetings where we're able to work together, get updates from them. They're great at answering questions. And, you know, certainly the, the work that they've been able to do on this, kind of like Deanna mentioned, is no one's perfect. They've been very short-staffed, I know lately, like everyone else with the employment shortage, but have been very responsive, working around the clock. Sheila is always available when we need her. So just want to take a moment to publicly thank her for all of her work on this. I know, I haven't met anyone that actually likes the pandemic or wants it to stick around any longer. And it's easy to vilify the Health Department as if they created it. But I think that for the situation that, believe it or not, she likes to remind us that you do handle other things at public health besides COVID. You're responsible for other things and there's not a pandemic going on. So certainly like all of us, Sheila would love for her team to get back to handling all the other public health areas a little bit more, but has done a great job stepping up and handling what is becoming a very unpopular topic. So with that, thank you, Sheila, and thank you for coming in today and giving us your time this morning.
Thank you very much, Angie, and thank you all for having me this morning. Yes, Angie and I have gotten to be very, very close over the last bunch of months. And I would have to say too, that it's the great partnerships with the schools that we have. You know, there are 113 health commissioners in the state of Ohio, and so then you all have even more superintendents. But myself and my peers, we talk all the time about our relationships with our schools and that we certainly could not do the work that we need to do related to any communicable disease, but specifically with COVID if it weren't for those great partnerships. So Angie and Megan, they just, they're just, run circles around some of what I hear goes on in some of the other counties in Ohio. So just really, Angie asked me to come and talk just a little bit about the specifics of the data, kind of where we are today, where we see we're going. I always tell people, I do actually have a crystal ball on my desk. It was given to me when I became a health commissioner about 17 years ago, and it doesn't work. And so I tell my friend, who's a health commissioner, that he shouldn't have given it to me because it doesn't work, and I'd like a refund on all of that. I wish I knew where we were going with all of this. For about six weeks now, the Association of Ohio Health Commissioners, we've been asking Dr. Vanderhoff, the medical director, and now the director of the Ohio Department of Health, we need to know what is your end game? I mean, what, are you looking for a number? Are you looking for a specific thing to happen? What is the end game? Because I think all of us realize that at this point, we have to be able to look forward and say, what does come next? I can tell you, 20 months is a long time to be in an incident command. And some of you who maybe know firefighters or policemen, that's what we all use across the country, is the incident command system in order to man. is the incident command system in order to manage emergencies or things like this when they become more than what the team that would normally handle them handle. So our normal communicable disease team is five people. And we, at one point, at our high point, we had 37 people working on this as things we thought were getting a little bit better. I was able to move some of our team back into their normal duties, and now slowly over the last two months have had to move some of them back into responding to this. But we do need to know what that end game is, and what is it that we're looking for to kind of flip this, to go from a Class A reportable, which means that every single solitary case has to be reported to the Health District immediately, within that day, to more of a Class B, which we work with the schools on all of the time, like a pertussis, or a measles, or a mumps, or something like that, that we would respond to, but we don't respond to every single solitary case. Now, some of those are Class A reportables, and we respond, but certainly not to this extent. So trying to figure out what is that balance? And at what point, for the United States, does this move from being a pandemic to being endemic, to being endemic, and we treat it as such? And we move to that point? We have not had a definitive answer from that. I will tell you internally, what we've tried to think about is, at what point we would look at that? And you all know that throughout all of this, one of the goals has been to keep the hospitalizations down, so that hospitals can react to not only the COVID patients that are coming in, but everything else that comes in. And we were fortunate the other night at the pandemic meeting to have an emergency room physician there. And at our table, somebody asked her that, well, when do you think that we will have beat this or we will have been at this level? And she said, when I don't have to keep patients in my emergency room for days because I have enough beds in the hospital to get them there. And I think that, you know, so for the hospital situation, that's kind of their goal. What we look at, and especially once the vaccines became available, you know, no vaccine is 100% perfect, and I hear that all the time. Well, we're still having disease, we're still having disease. Is it not working? And it is working. The goal of any vaccine is to prevent death, prevent severe illness, prevent hospitalizations, and let us all live through the illness, but come out good on the other end. And I'm going to show you a statistic that very much shows that it is working, that Delaware County is the highest vaccinated county in the state, and if you look across the country, one of the highest in the country. But what we've said is, okay, so what are we going to look at to try to decide when we think we're there? And one of the things that seems to make the most sense is if the cases are still going up, but the hospitalizations and the deaths are not, then maybe that is when we're there. And I will tell you right now, that looks pretty good. Our cases have gone up, but the severity of the illness has gone down, and we haven't seen as many hospitalizations. We haven't seen as many deaths as we were seeing like earlier on. Now, the Delta variant, and you know, we'll continue to have other variants, certainly has thrown a little bit of a loop into that, because if we hadn't had this severe variant, we may not even be having this conversation, and we could all go back to doing all of the things that we all did before we had the pandemic. But that's kind of where we are today, and trying to figure out what is that end game? And where I can tell you that even as we're speaking, I don't know what time it is, there's actually a committee of my peers working with the Ohio Department of Health to figure out, where do they see this end game? Because I think all of us across the state know that we have, we cannot stay in an emergency mode for another year and a half. Staffing, as Angie said, you know, we've lost several staff who just said, I just can't do this anymore. One of my peers up in Morro County just had a nurse just leave, and she said, I'm just not coming back. I cannot do this anymore. So that's kind of where we are, but the partnership has just been wonderful. So let me just share these little statistics with you, and then I'd be happy to answer any questions. So we're going to go from Big Walnut only, then to the schools, and then talk a little bit more. So these are your cases, actual case numbers for this school year. And you can see that we did have a high, and the high number there was 39, and that was the week of the 21st of September. Then they did start coming down a little bit. We said that you all actually, kind of not on purpose, I'm sure, but put your own little study in there for us to look at. And when you decided to put masks on your K through six, would we see some drops in numbers after that? And we did start to see a little drop. Now, you can see the last numbers higher again. I can tell you across the county, we went three weeks with some downward numbers. My Epi's tell me I can't call that a trend, but it was three weeks where we were getting a little bit excited, and then for some reason this week, we went back up again. What we do in public health when we see something like that is we go back and we say, well, what happened two weeks ago? So incubation period, 14 days for COVID. What happened before that? And so we did go back and we tried to look at, well, what kinds of things were going on? And not that any of these things might have caused it, but if you think about, there were festivals going on a few weeks ago, that we had county fairs going on. We had children that were, maybe there were, we've had more football games and more soccer games. I mean, more interactions maybe than we had been having. You know, early fall, when my children were little, I loved that part of the year because we got to go back out and see all of those people that we hadn't seen for a little bit. So try to look at that. None of that is anything that would say, oh, absolutely, positively, this is the reason why. But last week, we were at 16 cases, and this week, we're at 26. And so that's 10. Now, in your size school district, and I should have that number memorized, but I don't, is it?
About what students have, 47?
Forty-seven. I was going to say 45, so I was pretty close. So you'd say, well, 10 cases, that's not really that bad, but it is an increase. And so, you know, is there anything going on that would account for that? It's probably just a fluke. Across the state, the numbers were all going down, and then this week, they've started to go up a little bit again. Again, nothing that we can say, this is absolutely what happened, but it is something just to look at. Your next number is your case rate per 100,000. We get lots of Facebook feedback on the per 100,000, and people are like, well, there aren't even 100,000 people. Why would you even care about this? Well, this is one of the things that we do as epidemiologists, to be able to normalize a number so that we can do some comparisons. If we don't do that, we couldn't look to Big Walnut and say, okay, with 4,700, how does that compare with, say, an Olin Tangi with 20,000, 25,000? How do we look at those? So we change all of those things to rates so that we can look at that. And again, you can see, it follows just exactly like your other graph does, as far as we had the little peak, we went down, and then we went back just up a little bit. So that's that. This is per the, the next slide is the school districts as a whole. So one of the things that we know, and we follow for years and years and years, your schools have been giving us attendance data every single day, and we always monitor this because we know if we're going to see something in a community, a lot of times, we see it in the schools first. We have surveillance systems that tell us if the number of anti-diarrheal medicines is all of a sudden going up, if we start to see a lot of the fever medicines, if those start going up. We have this surveillance system that follows that. One of the things we use is also looking at the school attendance. If all of the sudden, we start seeing a lot of school absences, then our Epi step back and we start to say, okay, do any of these things relate to each other? Is there something going on that we need to be aware of? And so when we decided that we were going to have a grade card, and I'll should talk about that in just a moment, we thought, well, one of the things we want to do is what does that early surveillance look like? And so our four large school districts are what we decided to go. And Big Walnut is the red line, and you'll see that it's been a little bit higher. But all of them have had their peaks and valleys, and so we kind of keep an eye on those and see where we are. And then the next slide really just talks about, again, that's the rates. So same thing, just with looking at all of the schools added in there together. So we started off low, of course, at the beginning of school. We started to climb. We did come back down, and then we just went back up a little bit this week. But hopefully, that's just a little tiny bit, and it'll go right back down. What we do to get those numbers is every Sunday, either one of my staff or myself, we go through all of the exclusion lists for the previous week. We get all of those cases. We eliminate duplicates. We try to figure out what ones are new cases, and then those are where those numbers come from. So just so you know, that's where those numbers come from. I know there's always a lot of questions about, the data lies, the data lies, the data lies. And I can tell you, 100% certainty, none of my staff are making up data. I mean, this is an onerous task to keep track of all of these cases and contacts on a line list, and I promise you, nobody's making up anything. We did have a couple of glitches in our data late last year, well, would have been your late school year. And when we discovered it, we put right out there, this is what happened, this was the mistake when you're dealing with all of these various cells, because each person's line has like 25 cells that are, we're collecting data on. And we did have a glitch in one of them where one of the dropdown screens got broken. And so when they put whatever they wanted to put in there, instead of what was on the dropdown, those of you who use spreadsheets, it just screwed everything up. So we have had a couple of those glitches in the data. But I can promise you, our data is sound. These next couple of slides come from the Ohio Hospital Association. I would tell you, they have a great website. If people really are into data and they like to kind of see where we are as a community, it's ohiohospitalassociation/covid19. We are in Region 4. Angie, I do think the other day I told your group too, it's not, we're Zone 2 in Region 4.
But nobody would have known that.
Nobody, well. But if you click on the center of Ohio, you can look at our data and kind of see where we are with hospitalizations. Now, again, the reason that we care about COVID hospitalizations is that speaks to the severity of the disease. We keep track of the cases, but knowing how many people are in the hospital talks a little bit more about that severity. I can tell you, yesterday morning, there were 11 ICU beds in our entire region out of 698. Now, not all of those people in those ICU beds were COVID patients, again, looking at the severity of the illness. But I don't know about all of you all, but if my dad has a heart attack, I want him to be able to get into an ICU bed. I don't care where that bed is, I don't care what people are in those beds for, but I want him to be able to get in there. We had a low point last week of five. Five out of 698, that's a pretty scary statistic, if you think about it. And all of those were in one hospital. I'm on a call at nine o'clock every morning, and the hospitals all get on there and they talk about all of their issues, and they're actually bartering for who can take patients, who can find an ICU bed. I think it's similar to what they talked about with mental health, trying to find those providers. It's the same in the hospital situation. So that website, if you're into data, it's a great website. You can click on our region, and then as you scroll over things, you can see the exact number of children that are in hospitals, because I know that's always a big concern. I hear a lot of people say, well, why are we doing anything in the schools? Because kids don't get COVID. Well, they do. Kids don't die of COVID. Well, they do. Not necessarily in Delaware County. And to my knowledge, and I haven't looked at this this week, right? But two people, only two children even in the whole state of Ohio, but those babies were somebody's babies. And I don't care if it was only two or not, it's still children that did die. But if you're into those numbers, you can go on there, you can scroll over the data, and it tells you exactly how many kids were in the hospital. So this data comes from this, and I did talk to Angie a little bit about this on Monday, and I said, your district is kind of a unique district in that I can't just pick a ZIP code and look at it and tell you kind of what's going on in your whole district. Not the school, because I can tell you the school data, but this is kind of looking at your whole community. So I picked Sunbury-Galena and then the part of Westerville that's in Delaware. This was the last seven-day count. So those are the actual numbers of patients and the cases in the last seven days. And then I did break that down into the youth, because again, I know people are always wanting to know that. So this was the last seven-day count of that. The next slide just kind of shows you again that trend and what's happened since school started. We started going up, and then we did start coming down. The one thing we always want to talk about when we look at those very last numbers is, it does take sometimes almost a week for those cases, results to be reported to the Ohio Disease Reporting System. And so sometimes, you have to take those last couple of numbers with a little grain of salt, because depending upon how those test results come in, that could go up a little bit. But this is the latest numbers there. The other thing that we try to look at, next slide, oh, you already changed it. You're just good, is of course vaccination rates. And so I said a little bit ago that we're very fortunate in Delaware County that we do have a very high vaccination rate. But the Ohio Hospital Association webpage, now this is the private webpage that they've given us access to, so you can't go on and see these exact numbers. But this is what your vaccination rates are. So if you look at all ages, and then if you just look at youth, and again, right now, that's just the 12 to 17, because we can't vaccinate any children younger, although I understand that that may be coming within the next couple of weeks that the Pfizer will be available for children five and up. And we will work with the schools to do clinics, again, for the parents who choose to have their children immunized. But this is kind of where you are. I thought you might be interested to see that. And then, of course, there's our statistics. And you know what? I can tell you that I have complete confidence in all of the, that I have confidence in all the statistics that I've shared with you. I would bet my life on these statistics. These are the statistics that my team keeps every day, and they are, they scrub their data so much to make sure that it's all right. That's actually how we found the one error that we had. But this is where we are, 38 average new cases per day, per 100,000. So you have to double that, because in Delaware County, there's 214,000 people right now. And that's the new cases per day that we look at, and that is up a little bit. Last week, it was 34? Yeah, last week, it was 34. So it just did go up just a little bit. Again, eight cases, you know, people think, well, it's just eight cases. Well, again, maybe nothing, but we want to keep an eye on it. The next slide is our grade card, and we've got a lot of flack about our grade card. And, you know, one of the things that we wanted to do was to help our community to know kind of where we were in the big scheme of things, and whether we were having a ton of community spread, whether we weren't. And we could have just decided, we go exactly with what the CDC calls their high, medium, low. They call us high, we've been high for forever. It looks at just a couple of factors. And we said, well, what could we do to maybe make sure that we're looking at some more local data? How does that fit in with what the goals should be? These goals do come from the CDC. So the one is our case rate, it is still high. I'm having a hard time seeing that. I think it says 262 per 50, or per 100,000, and we want that to be less than 50 per 100,000. So we're still up there pretty high. Again, that's gone up just a little bit this week. We do really, really well with our immunizations. And our hospitalized patients, even though those numbers are still high, that number specifically looks at the number of COVID patients, number two factor. And the COVID patients are down a little bit, even though the capacity of the hospital isn't there. And then, like I shared, we look at the schools because we think that that's a way to kind of see what's going on at the community level with the surveillance. This next one, though, is the one I did want to also talk about. So this is specifically looking at cases related to their vaccination status. And the first part of the little section is from January all the way through. The second little bar is just from, I believe it's June and August. And we have started to see a little bit more vaccine breakthrough than we were seeing at the beginning of the year. Of course, you have to take that with a grain of salt. There also are more people vaccinated, so of course, you're going to have more vaccine breakthrough, because in the beginning, there wasn't any breakthrough to have. And remember, this is where people say, well, the vaccine doesn't work, the vaccine doesn't work, the vaccine doesn't work. Well, 20, only 25% of our cases are vaccinated. 75% of them are unvaccinated. So the vaccine is working to keep people from getting sick. But remember, the goal of this vaccine is to keep you out of the hospital and keep you from dying, and that's what those next two bars are. And while we have seen a little shift in those as well, if we just look at the last couple of months, we still are seeing more people that are unvaccinated in the hospital, and more people that are unvaccinated that are dying. But that little tiny graph at the bottom, which I'm sorry, it's so little, I shouldn't put it on its own slide. This is what I want people to realize when you think about vaccination and whether you believe that it works or not. Those bar graphs at the bottom are our case numbers. And that's comparing us with all of our surrounding counties compared to our vaccination rates. So we are right now at about 75% of our eligible population is vaccinated. Around, some of those numbers dropped down into the 40s. And if you look at that graph, our case number is lower than every single one of those other counties. So we are seeing community spread, but not to the extent that some of those other counties are seeing. So that's why we know vaccination works, because otherwise, our case numbers would be as high as some of those other ones. The highest one there, and I can't even see that, you all probably can't very well either, it was Knox County, unfortunately, and they have a very low vaccination rate. I think the last time I looked at that, it was like 40 something. I don't know if Mark can actually tell us. It's up there on the map.
The bottom one, Mark.
It's 153.
Yeah, so they're much, much higher based on that. So the next slide, these are some of the things that the CDC says that, you know, this is their report of us, we are still at high We are still at high transmission. If you look at the state of Ohio for all of the data points that they look at, the whole state of Ohio is still at high transmission. I believe a couple of weeks ago, one of our counties might've gone down to the orange level, but when I looked this week, they were all at high. So then we kind of go into, so what do we do about all of this? And when we look at what we can do, we can look at the community and what can we do as a community? We can look at the vaccine. Obviously, we still want people to be tested, and then we try to monitor the outbreaks. So with Angie's team, and I always say team, and then she reminds me, it's just Megan. With Megan.
Just Megan.
Just Megan.
We do have two other nurses.
Oh, you do?
Yeah. Three for each building. She's the one that's the point person, for sure.
So one of the things we've been looking at is, are we having outbreaks within the school classrooms? And we have had to shut down some sports teams and some classrooms, not at Big Walnut, because of that kind of an outbreak. But we're not seeing those outbreaks within the classroom. If we do have an outbreak and it involves students, it usually has to do with extracurricular activities, not what's going on in the classroom. You all have, put these things into place. Your masking of your K through six, you have a pandemic plan, you're using the social distancing. We're still reminding everybody to, you know, good respiratory etiquette. Let's wash our hands. Who would've thought it would've taken a pandemic to tell people to wash their hands? But to really monitor those outbreaks and then try to get on top of them. Now, we have had some outbreaks in nursing homes and those kinds of things, but not really very much in the school at all. So again, just a couple of slides was showing you the CDC data. And again, you can see that we kind of went up a little bit, and then we went back down. The next slide is some of the same, and so is the next slide. So just to kind of show you where we've been, and I did go back just to the school year. If you go on these pages, they show you the entire pandemic, but I mean, I think it's more important at this point for us to learn from what we know, but let's move forward and see where we are today. So that's kind of where we are with the data. Just as a couple of reminders, we do isolate the ill person. People always try to use isolation and quarantine interchangeable. They are not interchangeable. We isolate the sick person. That doesn't change regardless of where they were, whether they were masked, whether they're vaccinated, doesn't matter. All cases have to isolate for 10 days, and there's no way to get out of that. And so that is the fact, and people always say, then we always go to the, why are we keeping the well children home? And that's kind of what I want to talk a little bit today. So quarantine is what we do with those people who have been exposed. So during the infectious period of the case, these people were exposed, and then for 14 days, which is the incubation period, we want to watch them closely to make sure that they don't become sick, so then they don't expose more people to become sick. And so that's why we quarantine. And quarantine hasn't changed for COVID since the beginning. The incubation period is still 14 days, and basic quarantine is 14 days. What we've learned with COVID though, over the years, over the year, 20 months, is that most people, if they're going to become sick with COVID, they start to see those symptoms between days three and five. And so the CDC felt very comfortable, I think it was at the beginning of the school year last year, saying, we could look at a 10-day quarantine period. Somebody actually had to stay out of activities for the 10 days, but as long as they monitored themselves for day 11, 12, 13, and 14, they could go back to their normal activities. So we did go there, say we would do that, and of course, the schools still work with us and make sure that those kids stay well if they come back. Another option then that just came into play within this last few months is a seven-day option. So if no symptoms, and between day five and seven, the parent chooses to do a test, either a PCR or an antigen. If they do an antigen, it does have to be proctored, which means you have to do it on the phone with somebody or on your computer with a medical professional. And if that test comes back negative, that child can return on day eight. Still has to monitor for symptoms from eight through 14, because again, you could have somebody that becomes symptomatic later on, but they are allowed to return to school. So that's kind of where we are right now. One of the things we're looking at, again, because of what we know, we're seeing in the schools is, we know already that there are some children that are not considered contacts, because either there were two masks involved, so the case and the contact both had a mask on, the contact had a mask on, they were socially distanced appropriate, all those other things that we've put into place. Those children are not considered, they are considered contacts, and they have to quarantine, but they are allowed to stay in class and quarantine, and we request that they put a mask on. Like even the vaccinated children, we'd like them to put a mask on for that 14 days. It's not required that they do that. But because we do know you can get the disease even if you're vaccinated, we do ask them to put that on. What we're looking at is, so let me back up. All those children then, we're not tracking them as contacts, because they had one of these things in place. The schools still monitor them for symptoms, just like they would for any other illness, but they're allowed to stay in school. But right now, any child who did not have a mask on, wasn't able to socially distance, participated in a strenuous activity with a case, those children have to stay home and quarantine. What we're looking at is what we're calling our essential student policy. So back way up to the beginning of this, we allow for essential workers. So EMS, firefighters, healthcare, my staff. If we can't do without that person, and for some of our, you know, our smaller townships, if they lose a EMS worker, it just decimates them. So what they, what we've done is said, okay, these essential workers can go to work, they're on quarantine, but they can go to work, wear a mask consistently for that 14 days. They have to then go home and stay home. They can't go home and go out and do all their other things, because they are quarantined. But we'll allow for an essential worker exemption. And most of us have been doing that across the state for probably over a year now. What we're looking at then is, what about if we consider the essential student? So if going to school is a student's job, which it is, then what if they could remain in class as long as the parents would allow them to put on a mask? They wouldn't have to stay home. Then those children could also stay in school, get the learning that they so badly need, and we know last year was very difficult with the kids not being in school. But they could stay in school, but they have to have a mask on. And as long as they don't become symptomatic, that could continue through their 14-day period. Now, they still have to go home afterwards and stay home. They can't participate in extracurricular activities or anything like that, but they could stay in school, which I know is one of your goals, is to keep the children in school. So that's what we're looking at. We're working on that with Angie and the other superintendents to see how that would play out. I'm a little bit nervous about going to this next week, because we did in two of our school districts see a little upward turn, so we may say, let's wait one more week and see if we start headed back down. You know, we feel comfortable doing this because of the data, because of what we know about the potential outbreaks. So that's kind of where we are today. And then the last slide is just the different quarantine options. You know, quarantine for 14 days. Quarantine hasn't changed. I know that's one of your parameters, is that quarantine changes. It hasn't changed, and it's still 14 days. But these are some of the things that we allow for in the school system only, because we know that it's a controlled environment, and you all have things in place to help to protect the kids. That's really all I had to talk about. I hope I didn't talk too long. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Sheila. Any questions from the board?
I'd just like to say thank you. We've seen you twice this week, and appreciate you providing good, solid information for us as we're trying to make the best decisions for students. So thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I appreciated your, I don't know, I don't want to put words in your mouth, whether it's frustration or concern around, how long do we do this? And so I guess, can you just talk from your past experience? What are some of those things that typically would turn something like this to more of an endemic model? I know nobody wants to sign up for that today, but Justin, maybe if you look back at N1, H1, or maybe something in the past, can you just refer to some of the things that have determined that to be more of an endemic model versus the one we're in?
Yeah, so that's real hard, because I'm very happy to say I haven't lived through another pandemic. We did have H1, N1, although we did see cases, it never came to the fruition that this one did. I know it's real interesting, because people, the perception was that public health overreacted, because we didn't have all these cases, and we want to say, but what would've happened if we hadn't done what we did? I mean, you know, it's one of those chicken and egg, you don't really know what comes first. I actually said to a group of first responders at the beginning of all of this, that I hoped in the fall of last year, that they would've said, gosh, public health overreacted again. It didn't come to fruition. But that was my hope, is that they would've thought we all overreacted. I think the thing that it's probably the easiest to compare this with would be the flu, because it's also a respiratory illness that's spread by droplets. We do see peaks and valleys of that. We do have an annual vaccine for that. We consider flu as kind of endemic, and there are a lot of deaths from flu. People don't really realize that, I think, sometimes. I mean, we share that data, but I don't think it's big on people's radars maybe, like this has been. I think when I think about diseases, you know, especially in the school system, we have always worked with the schools on diseases, and probably two or three times a year, we have a pertussis in one of the younger grades, whooping cough, some people call it whooping cough. And what we do with that is, the school lets us know, because one case, because this isn't normal, is considered an outbreak, one case in a classroom. What we do then is that child gets isolated. We work with the school nurses to identify any children in that classroom that are not vaccinated. Those children have to stay home for the incubation periods, sometimes two incubation periods, because we don't consider the outbreak to be over until we go to incubation periods with no new cases. And then we monitor the rest of the children, the school and us. We send a letter home to the rest of the parents and say, there was a pertussis in the classroom, these are the signs and symptoms, this is when you should notify your doctor. So that's kind of what we do with flu. So flu is a reportable disease, but for the schools, it's reportable for an outbreak. So again, if your school nurses were to all of a sudden see, you know, six or seven flus in a classroom, or in a building, or in a grade, then they would let us know, and then we would do the same thing. Obviously, you isolate those children. Now with flu, we don't, we don't make someone stay home because they're not vaccinated for flu. But we send the letter home to the parents and say, you know, we've had this many cases of flu in this child's classroom, these are the signs and symptoms you should be watching for, these are the things you should go to the hospital for, please keep your child home if they're ill, all of those things. So I would see that at some point, when all of the people that are those powers-to-be could get their heads together and say, let's treat this like that. Now, we see community spread with the flu. I mean, we know, we go in peaks and valleys. We usually see our first flus in September. We see some of our flus as late as April, May. We kind of watch that. We put that graph out. We didn't last year, because I didn't have anybody to do that graph. But we put that graph out every year and report the number of cases every year. The state tracks hospitalizations and deaths of flu. Right now, we're tracking all cases. That is not the case. Now, all cases of flu get reported to the Ohio Disease Reporting System, but we're not calling every single person that has the flu, or issuing orders to every single person that has the flu like we are with the pandemic. So my hope would be that we could get to that point where we could say, let's treat this more like we do this. Because if you think about it, with most communicable diseases, the whole reason we do all of this is because people don't know what they're looking for, right? I mean, how many of you that have children would know what the signs and symptoms are of pertussis? You may, you may not, especially if you're a first-time mom or dad. So we want to make sure we educate them on, this is what you need to look for. Well, honestly, I'm not sure that there's anybody that lives in the United States that doesn't know, this is what you're looking for with COVID, and this is when you ought to see your doctor, or this is when you ought to go to the emergency room. So I think we're there. It's not my decision to make about when it becomes a Class B as opposed to a Class A. That's something that the state has to decide.
No, and I appreciate that. And I just was looking for that perspective, of what are some of those things, or what does that look like? And I felt like you did that with your answer, so I appreciate that. I don't know why you're waiting. I'm just teasing.
You know, try to get 113. I don't know, how many superintendents do you all have across the state?
Six hundred and eighty.
Yeah. We can't even get 113 health commissioners to agree on anything. There's only 113 of us.
I can only, I can only imagine. But no, to echo Leanne, I appreciate the effort you've put in. I feel like, in my work, I work with some different businesses and organizations around the state, and I've always felt like, from what I see, the employers that I work with around there, I felt like Delaware County's done the most sensible job and the most practical job of trying to deal with this, and trying to balance the needs of public health with what's going on in our community. So I appreciate the efforts of you and all of your staff in that.
Trying to find the balance, you know, this did become very political. Public health should never be political, right? But it did become political, so it has been a little bit of a different challenge. Nobody challenges me when I isolate somebody for pertussis.
Well, and to that end, I think, Mr. President, and Sheila, actually, the opportunity for gratitude in terms of, and I don't know if this bleeds into our next topic, Madam Superintendent, but the conversation of, you know, you showing up in our community, the professionalism you bring, the clear data that you share, the opportunity to engage in civil conversation around it. I personally found it very affirming. Not that the data was affirming something, but just the opportunity for discourse was affirming. It wasn't a situation where people, even people who were disagreeing, weren't able to articulate what they, what they thought, what they believed. And I believe your demeanor in handling that was admirable, and I just wanted to articulate as one of five, my sincere appreciation for that. We've heard about your, you know, 20 months of weekly conversations with our superintendent, largely through the paradigm of our superintendent. To hear it from you also, in terms of how you're engaging with the other districts, and what the data is for us specifically, was very powerful to me, so thank you.
You're welcome. I will say that it's the weekly big meetings, but we probably text at least once or twice a week about something. I did talk to some first responders the other night. I think everybody has my cell phone now, and I get texts at all hours of the day. I will say thankfully, that has calmed down. But there was a period of time where I think all of us, we had so many questions.
Sure.
Which is one of the reasons we implemented the once a week, especially for the nurses, because it seems like, no matter how clear we try to be with the flow charts, or how clear we try to do this, there's always a question, well, yeah, but what about this? And we're like, why didn't we think about that one? So poking holes in each other's thoughts also is very beneficial.
And again, I don't know if this bleeds into the next conversation or not, but I guess I do have a question in reference to what you mentioned for the essential student consideration. I think I heard Monday, Tuesday night, that that was a realm of possibility for you as a consideration for the county, based on an action in this district. I was wondering if you could help clarify that, and I won't lead a, I won't lead the question, so I'll attempt to just see if I can check my understanding. Can you talk a bit more about your decision-making calculus around that topic?
So because we can look at the data, and we know if we do see a lot of spread from student to student, it does not appear to be related directly to the classroom. Now, even saying that it seems to be more related to extracurricular activities, because the community spread is so high, we can't pin that down and say, this is exact. But when we start to see the case, the cases kind of jump from one to the next, to the next, within that incubation period, it makes a lot of sense that that's where it's occurring. We're not seeing that in the classroom. We do tend to see that with families. For example, when I did the data Sunday night for each of the school districts, and we go back and we look at last week's list versus this week's list, and we try to eliminate, lots of times, the same last name would come up, because within a household, obviously, there's a little bit more chance of spread. People are not wearing masks at home. They share items, they share similar spaces. So what we're looking at is, let's look at the data, let's see what makes sense, what could we do to keep those children in school? The quarantine's the same, they still can't do extracurricular activities if they didn't have that mask on beforehand, because they're a little bit more apt now to get something than the person that did have the mask on beforehand. But let's let them stay in school with the mask on, as long as they don't become symptomatic, and then they can continue with their education, but we still feel like, because of the data, and then they can continue with their education, but we still feel like, because of the data, we're able to look at, um, that as a possibility. Now, if we do this, and we start seeing something change, then all bets are off, and you know, we'd have to go back to, to the more strict. We would have to do the same thing, though, even with the, the children that are vaccinated that technically don't, are able to stay in classroom. We started seeing something odd within a classroom, we would, we would have to stop that. We have, like I said, not at, at Big Walnut, we have had to shut down a classroom. We also have had, um, a couple of classrooms where it was mandated that everybody wore a mask for two weeks. Everybody thinks that we can't do that anymore, um, because of Senate Bill 22. We can't do that blanketly. I can't say to Angie, your entire school has to wear a mask without an unrelated, without a diagnosis that ties all that, but if we start seeing an outbreak in a classroom, that is tied to a medically diagnosed, um, case, we can do that. We can also close the entire school, we haven't had to do that. We did do that last school year with a particular, um, school. We had to close the whole school for at least an incubation period.
Right.
Because we had too many cases.
Thank you, and again, that, just for, uh, the recordings, not at Big Walnut, I guess my, I am going to be a little bit more precise with my question than, or attempt to be. As you, I had not heard this idea of an essential student before. Certainly appreciate it, uh, I think I've been very vocal in terms of my belief about keeping healthy children in the place of being educated, as well as healthy staff in classrooms to do that job. My question around the essential student, and as I think I heard it Tuesday night, is that your willingness to consider it now at a county level is based on the idea that Big Walnut made a change in our last board meeting. Partly, not, not completely, of course, but there was a, a partial variable there that you were willing to consider it at a county level based on the fact that we had made a change. Is that accurate?
Absolutely. I think one of the, the first foundations is what kind of a mask mandate, if anything, do you have in there, so we're already protecting children? What are the rest of your pandemic plans? What are your social distancing protocols? How closely are we able to work with the staff, and how quickly are we able to get the sick children out of the class? And you know, our parents have been just wonderful, I mean, they call you all a lot of times and let you know the child's positive before we even get the report in the Ohio system, so that has been such a good thing. Um, we do have some, um, some schools, not our larger districts, but that are not so forthcoming with some of the data, that we would definitely not be, not be even considering to do this. But, you do have to keep those other things in place, and then this kind of builds on that.
And again, I think just for sequencing, no, I, I appreciate that. I hadn't heard of that term before Tuesday, and I think the opportunity just to talk about that here was very powerful to me. Again, thank you.
So, I will tell you, Adam Howard, who's my Director of Preventative Health, he's actually on paternity leave, he just had twins on Saturday, um, he actually coined that, that saying, because we've had essential worker, your schoolteachers have fallen under essential worker, so we were trying to think, well, what would be the most like? Um, some of our, my peers have started doing some of this with some of their schools, and they're calling it critical response, or, I don't know, we just thought, it makes sense, it's the same thing. Put a mask on, stay in school, stay at work, do what you need to do, um, so, yeah.
And so, I, I mean this partially in a humorous manner, but if we can stay away from critical response is what will happen, that will become abbreviated to CR and people will...
Yeah, yeah. Let's not do that.
I like essential student.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you so much, I really appreciate all the information that you brought to us today, and I appreciate, um, too, the information just on the hospital ICU availability and, and kind of the mentions of, um, like, hospital staff availability and just, you know, availability of, or stashing, staffing issues across the healthcare industry. Um, just, I think it's important that we all remember that it's, it's not just about COVID, it's, I think we all have a responsibility, um, to our community to keep communicable diseases, you know, low, stop, stop spread, because health emergencies still happen, you know, strokes, heart attacks happen, accidents happen. I've, I've heard recently, um, a few stories even of, of falls from tree stands and, you know, things like that happen, and we want to make sure that, you know, those community members get the high level of care that, that we all deserve, so.
Absolutely. Yeah, that's been, I think that's been probably the hardest thing on the hospitals is, you know, I'm, I'm a nurse by training and worked in hospitals for years, I can't imagine not being able to get a patient into a bed if they needed that. Um, there's, uh, rules that say how long a patient can stay in an emergency room, but right now, they have to stay there because there's no place else for them to go. And I did tell the emergency room physician that was at our table the other night, it's very gratifying to me. I know how well we work with our partners, um, and how appreciative we are of all of our partners, but on this call, it's our entire region, they are like bartering for beds, they're like, I have an emergency room patient who's been here for four days and I need this kind of a bed, or I need a ventilator. It's, you know what, we can all work together, we really are all on the same page here. There is passion on both sides, and, you know, unfortunately, some of that has come to being expressed maybe not as positively as it could be, but we really are all on the same side here. We want your kids to stay in school just as, just as much as you do, and I'll say something that the President, um, nobody wants this to be over any more than our team wants this to be over. One of the city council meetings I was at recently, um, the city councilman said, COVID sucks, and I said, yes, 100%. I mean, it's not a good thing, we want it to all go away, and, you know, I know in my lifetime, I'll never see this again. I hope that we've learned enough from this that, um, maybe if this does happen again, and they do tend to happen about every hundred years or so, um, that we've learned a lot of things that will make the next one better.
Thank you.
Angie, do you want me to stay for a while, because are you going to have your, your next conver- oh, that's next Thursday?
I, I think I kind of tied them, then with just letting the board know that we did meet, and we'll plan on doing, um, a presentation from the committee a week from next, our evening meeting.
And then if you need me to come back for that, just let me know. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, um, kind of on a, I guess, more positive note, not that we didn't appreciate Sheila's conversation, um, we have an update on our Purple Star Committee, and we have Mr. Matt Cox, our Principal at Souders, who oversees that for the district, as well as Ms. Kobe Donahue, who works at our middle school and who has coordinated the tailgate that we've done the last few years, so. I'm here to give you a quick update on that, on the heels of our annual tailgate.
I like the purple.
Matt actually has purple pants that we all were hoping he would wear, we asked him the other day, he's kind of let us down a little bit there.
I, uh, yeah, those are a special, not that this isn't a special occasion, you get to present to the school board, but, uh, yeah, I, I kind of held those back for our Purple Up Week last year.
I thank you.
Uh, first of all, good morning, and thank you Superintendent Hamburg, and President Schneider, and the entire board for the opportunity to talk this morning, uh, and I'll let, Eric Kobe will join in or share here in a little bit, but just a little background on Purple Star. Um, Ohio was the first in the nation to have Purple Star, and Purple Star specifically tries to support families that have active military, uh, parents in their, or family members, I should say, it's not just parents. So, because, and, and going back to something that Dr. Fagan said, those, those families do experience different things than other families experience, and we had a, a parent come home last year that had been deployed for about a year and a half, uh, he's a helicopter pilot, and he had been overseas, and, and those, that, that even coming back, when a parent comes back, that can throw things off in a family. Uh, so anyways, uh, it's, it's definitely brought awareness to us and to our, our building and to our district. So, uh, Ohio was the first to do this in 2016, 17, and our middle school was our first building, uh, to be Purple Star recognized, there's a process that you have to go through, and you do have to be renewed every three years, so you have to continue to do things to continue to keep that status. We are one of, uh, just a handful of districts in the entire state that have all of our buildings that have been recognized, uh, as Purple Star, and a couple of our buildings have had to renew and, and have cur- and are still current with that status. Uh, we have about 80 students in our district that have that connection with a, a military family member, and I do want to mention that those, that's about 80 students that want us to recognize them and want to be part, because there are some military members that don't necessarily want to, to be part of the events or don't want, for whatever reason, and we certainly respect that, so. Um, and, and one of the things I want to go back to is, as a teacher, I was a teacher here for 11 years, I don't know that I ever knew if any of my kids had a military connection. And again, thinking about what they may go through that may be different than any other kid, I think is, is very important. So, um, as a district, we have a couple district events a year, and, and we have, and we just had one of those events last week, and so I want Kobe to jump in and talk a little bit about our district event, we had a tailgate, uh, we had about 100 people attend that event last Friday night, and she's going to talk a little bit about that, and also, we have a Purple Up Week in, in April, so let you go ahead and jump in.
So, last Friday, we had our Purple Up Tailgate, if you will, and thank you to those of you on the board who came, it always means a lot to have your support. Every year, we kind of sit down and we think about how we want to do it, and I kind of bounce some ideas off of Matt, and he so graciously kind of just lets me roll with it. This year, we decided to honor Colonel John Stewart, who actually has a family in the district, and he was overseas, I believe he got home last year after one of his students actually graduated from Big Walnut. He missed a lot of stuff previously to be overseas. And the reasons why we decided to ask him, because we thought it was important for the community to recognize one of our own. He was a little humbled at first, and I don't think he really knew what to say, but he agreed to it, because sometimes I, I tend to be convincing, and I kind of told him whether he wanted to believe it or not, he's kind of a big deal, so he came all dressed up and, and we were able to honor him, and if you were there, you got to see how cool it was for the entire home side to stand up and recognize him, it was pretty cool. During that event, we kind of invite all of our families who have active members, each one of our schools has a liaison who kind of connects with those families, and invite them to come, we kind of have a relationship with them. So, they just come, they mingle, a lot of them actually know each other, they work together, they, they know of each other, so it's cool to see them kind of all get together and actually kind of have some common ground with their kids. This year, we were lucky enough to have our entire meal donated by the Firehouse Tavern, Jody Teal and Carol Wampler, Whampler so graciously put that together, which was super awesome. So, it, it went really well, we always have extra people come, I always kind of meet up with some people and convince them to arrive with their Jeeps and trucks, and, and it turns out to be a great event. So, similar to that, we do a winter event, which is a little more fancier, it's inside, it's kind of like a more, not more like a tailgate, but like a, a dinner, sit-down dinner. So, we do that inside in the winter, and then throughout the year, every school has their own separate events. At the middle school, we do multiple things for our Purple Up students, and I am lucky enough to have a principal who kind of lets me roll with that also. And sometimes he, he, yes, he lets me roll with that, he lets me do whatever for our military students, and, and I'm lucky enough for that as well. Purple Up Week is kind of a special event for our community also. We have many local businesses who have started to back, uh, us in our military efforts as well, so, yes, last, last Friday went off very well, and I already have a mad list for next year, so, super excited about that.
You just don't tell Kobe, no. That's, that's the way it works.
That's the moral of the story.
I, I mean, that's the moral of the story, so, uh, and, and it was, it was a huge event, and we try to find a balance between doing some district events, and again, as Kobe mentioned, to connect those families to one another, because it can be isolating when we have over 4,000 students and 80 of our students are connected. We also try to do some district events as well. For instance, Veterans Day looks, we all recognize Veterans Day and do an event for Veterans Day, but that's more school-specific in what meets the needs of, of the, the kids in, in, in that specific school community. As a result of our Purple Star, uh, Week last, uh, last year, we were able to provide two $1,000 scholarships to graduating Big Walnut seniors that had a military connection. We also donated, uh, $1,500, over $1,500 to Buckeye Military Moms, and they send care packages overseas. And last year, it's always, I, I think it's fun for our kids to collect things to be able to send over. Last year, with the pandemic, we decided to, because one of the non-glamorous things about sending those care packages is paying for the postage, and so that's something that we did last year, was help them out with that postage. Um, so, the, the couple other things, again, just our, our reputation, Big Walnut's reputation in this area and the state, and then, and then the state continues to grow, and, um, I just have a quote, and it's from Pete Lupita, I, uh, he is the Ohio MIC3 Commissioner, so he works across states, that's the, uh, Military Interstate Children's Compact Commission, so it works state to state on educating, uh, students, and, and he's a big, he reaches out to us for ideas, and how are you doing this, but he just said, your local Big Walnut team is a template model framework, which we recommend to others in the state, and that says something about Big Walnut, it says something about our committee, and, and Kobe is one piece of just an awesome committee we have across the district. So, uh, again, it's, it's been able, we feel like we're able to better connect and better serve, uh, our military-connected students through Purple Star. So, I appreciate the opportunity to present this morning, and certainly, if you had any questions, we'd be happy to answer those.
I'd just like to make a comment, that Kobe indicated the other night at the, at the event on Friday, that she's, gets calls from other schools asking to share information about this model program that we have here at Big Walnut, and she was talking about the number of schools she's actually spoken to, who are reaching out to us as kind of that, um, guide for how you implement this program, and I think that just speaks to the great things that you guys as part of the team are doing, and thank you for that.
Thank you.
Anything else for me?
Yeah, I mean, I would echo all those appreciations, and I remember going to the first one a few years back and just seeing how much bigger Kobe continues to make this in, in every good way. Um, but one of the things that hit me, I was actually, I'm driving back into town the other day, and I was going through Delaware, and there was a sign-up on one of their, um, city mark signs that said that they were a Purple Heart community, and it got me thinking about what we were doing here. Is there anything similar to this Purple Star program that's for, like, villages and townships, and if there is, is there an opportunity, I mean, you guys have done a great job of reaching out and getting more folks involved, I just didn't know if there was something similar to that, that local governments participate in, and if there's a way, maybe we can even draw in more participation from, from that aspect of things?
So, yes, we, uh, we are considered a Purple Star community in general, just because of all of the schools being Purple Star recognized, as far as they kind of deem some berry already, like the Purple Star community. So, we're already kind of up on that recognition list. Chip Merkel, actually, who we work with, and I forget his title.
He works for ODE, he is in charge of Purple Star.
Yes, and so he is actually working on, working with us for exactly that, to make sure that the entire community with the schools gets recognized as well. So, that's something that's already actually a work in progress, so, it's pretty exciting.
Thank you.
Thanks again to both of you. All right, I have one more item from my superintendent's report. Like our high school principal, Mr. Randy Jados, to come up, and he just wanted to give an update, um, it's hard to believe, but we are already about halfway through October, which means our move to the new building is coming fast and furious, and so obviously Andy and his team have been dedicating a lot of time to that, and just wanted him to give a quick update to the board.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was waiting for Wayne, I thought I was going to get, uh, walk-up music, I didn't, I don't have that anymore, apparently.
He didn't adjust the microphone, he didn't.
And, and a quick side note, they mentioned working with, uh, working with, uh, Chip Merkel from ODE, he was actually my eighth-grade shop teacher, and I received a C minus in that class, so don't ask me to put anything together. But I have been able to put together, great segue, um, presentation for today on how we're transitioning to the new high school. So, we, we started out a lot with staff, our thought was, if we could get staff to buy in, um, excited about the new building, then all their interactions with students would be positive, and the students would feel better about this transition since it's mid-year. Just real quick, we do surveys all the time, probably since I've been here, I've done at least 50, if not more, in seven years, and, um, the highest rate survey we've ever done was when we had our tour last week, uh, on Thursday, we had 57, um, staff members that were able to tour the building, and out of five, they gave the building a 4.65, and you need to understand, too, some of them have taught in the same room for almost 30 years. So, having that move is, is going to be a big deal for them in, in mid-year, and they still see all the possibilities, uh, for students in improving instruction in that building, so, uh, even with all that, extremely excited about moving in. So, as far as the student transition, um, and, and our admin team has been working really hard on this, um, we're having on December 1st, we have equal time every Wednesday, which is a flexible period where students can go where they need to, uh, to get assistance, um, right before lunch every Wednesday. And during that time on December 1st, uh, we're going to show them a 12 to 15-minute video, uh, that our video team, uh, that Melissa Maxim works with, our news team, is going to film, hopefully November 10th, November 11th is what we're looking at, and I'll go over with them, and they're going to put together, uh, this video of everything they possibly would want to know about that new building. Um, we've got a drive- We've got a driveway 101. We're actually going to film students going into the driveway and where they park, how they enter the building, where they go if they're late, navigating breakfast, navigating lunch, safety 101 in case there's an emergency. So I believe there's 11 different ones. And then, once again, we're trying to keep it to 12 to 15 minutes. But then what we're going to do, our team then will segment it into all these different smaller videos. So that way over break, if they're like, "Oh my gosh, I didn't remember how to this," or "I wonder about this," they can then go back from our website and on School G they'll be able to look and be, "Okay, I just want to look at this specific one." Or maybe it's, you know, Tuesday, January 4th, and I just woke up at 7:00 AM and I'm going to be late. Click, what do I do if I'm late? So we'll have those there as well. So we hope that's a good tool and we're really excited about that. And then we're also, goal is over break, we do have some students, obviously to the prior presentation, that deal with anxiety. And so those students that specifically we've worked with through the year, we'll have the building open over break, working with, you know, obviously the construction team, but have that open. So if students have a need, they can walk the building, we'll have staff there just to, once again, make them feel better about that move. And then we're going to train our Eagles First Flight mentors, which is our freshmen and new student orientation leaders. They already have, you know, experience leading with, obviously with the students that are new to our school, so they've kind of already been through that a little bit. So I'm going to bring them in over break. Once again, we'll train them, they'll know all the building, they'll have maps, frequently asked questions, all that type of information they'll have. And then that way, they'll be there when the new students or when students come in over break. And they're also going to help us for that first day of school on Tuesday, January 4th. They'll be stationed throughout the school, they'll be wearing their shirts, everybody, every student will know they can go to them if they have a question. And they'll be there between every period while they're stationed throughout. So then the big piece of this is what does that first day of school in the new building look like? So January 4th, we're going to have a completely different schedule. I've got a great team of teachers, four teachers that are working on that, working on that schedule. They are communicating with our PAC, our Teacher Leadership Group that meets monthly. And so this is continuing to involve, but we're going to have a larger orientation period right before lunch. The reason why we picked that time, A, so that way they'll know how to get food, and then B, that is the time of the day when the majority of our students are all in the building. So that's kind of our sweet spot with our schedule if students have late start and that type of thing. So we'll have that longer period. We have nine academic wing, academic pods. We're using seven of them for the first semester. So each pod will have kind of a different schedule that they were tour the entire building. So the groups will be together and then they won't be all in the same place. So we've got a whole entire kind of orientation thing that will occur. And so they might, even though they've been there two or three periods, they might not have been to cafeteria, they might not know where the auditorium is yet, they might, you know, maybe they saw the video, but it's a whole different deal when you can actually walk it. So those teachers will take them around and they'll walk that during this extended time period right before lunch. We're also planning some other activities throughout the day as well. We've talked to our teachers about this being kind of a softer day as far as as an academic focus. Also, students have been, you know, out for two weeks and sometimes things happen during that two weeks. So just making sure that we do everything possible to ease that anxiety to the new building. So, once again, that day is still kind of, still being formed, but we've already got a schedule of where the teachers will go. And like I said, we've already, that committee's met two or three times and then shared out to PAC last week.
And I know one of the ideas that we considered was trying to get the kids over in December and I think Doug Swartz about had a heart attack, our director of facilities, just due to the tightness of getting things moved in. So I asked Andy to kind of brainstorm, what are some ways we can do that? Have an option available over break, but then really make sure that first day. So we're down to the wire on that and it's going to be tight, but we're going to be ready.
I think so too. And I was just over there yesterday, I've been over there three times in the last week and every couple of days, something new happens. And it's amazing how much, you know, because you look and you get, "Oh my gosh, this isn't going to be ready." You know, well, it's going to be, it's just not going to be ready tomorrow. And so they're working, working very hard. Doug Swartz is doing, I think, an amazing job. I mean, I'm in a lot of meetings, he's in every single meeting and I think really doing a good job of coordinating this huge process.
Is there a consideration about an open house night for the community or families in this space so that folks can see? You know, this is on, the exciting part is we're there, but it's also on the shoulders or the tail end of a lot of other things that have kind of built up to this at this point. Mr. Jados, is there, or maybe Ms. Hamburg, I'm sorry.
We've already met on it.
So it's going to be the following day, it'll be January 5th. So we're going to open up on Tuesday and then we have our first wrestling athletic event is going to be on the 6th, which is wrestling. First basketball game is on the 7th. So this will be really the first day that the community really could be in there. And we kind of caught the first day, there's a lot of things going on and, you know, doing that. So it's going to be 6 o'clock on January 5th in open house, ribbon cutting type of event. And just, yeah, very excited about that and allow the community in. I think also P R E is going to be available as well.
And obviously we'll get more information out to the community. We've just had some initial meetings on that and I believe I sent a save the date to the board so that you have that date available. So as we kind of get those details finalized, we'll get some information out because obviously it's a really exciting time. And we didn't get to do anything related with P R E last year. So it was actually Kim Castiglione, the principal's idea about having that building open as well. So if people want to tour that, they can. More info to come. Anything else for Andy?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Unless you have any questions for me, I am done with my report.
Is that all you've got?
That's it.
Jeremy, over to you for the treasurer's report.
So I don't have too much, but I just wanted to make sure that the board, as well as the community, know that information is available. So there are often times where terms get thrown out and while I realize this is maybe not an attack specifically on me, I think Angie and I do try to run things efficiently and transparently and just make sure that, that we are providing things to the community as well as the board so people know what's going on. I'll give an example, as Mr. Cooper did a very detailed dive and does every September of staffing. That's one of our largest costs is staffing. I think I've tried over the years to keep everybody very up to date on our insurance situation, which has been a huge challenge for us over the years and being able to do that. So I just wanted to make sure that, that people know that there is information available and where to find it. So financial report is available online. Probably a big picture, and this will be next month, is the five-year forecast. A lot of information goes into that and I hear whispering from prior board members. A lot of work goes into that and it's really, statutorily, it's a requirement, but we've really tried to use it as a planning tool. So, and quite honestly, some of the ways that we have tried to work towards doing like insurance changes have been because of that, looking at that piece. So I just wanted to make sure that the board, as well as the community, knows that five-year forecast is available as a big picture. We've got a financial report that we put out every month, which has a lot of detail. And if there are questions, I'm always happy to take them because the last thing I want people to do is to jump to conclusions, to assume of what's going on in the district. I think both Angie and I do take it to heart. I've been in school finance for, this is my 15th year, and I've said to a lot of people, "I realize that I'm dealing with two of probably your most precious possessions in some way, shape, or form, your money and your kids." And that's not a, that's not a charge that I take lightly. So I just wanted to take an opportunity to say that and make sure that people see that there is information available and I'm always open for questions.
Jeremy, could you also just include maybe a comment on the notes that go with the five-year forecast? Because sometimes people look at that document and they're like, "This doesn't really tell me anything." But I think your notes are really helpful and those are online as well.
Yeah, so as part of the finding, the five-year forecast document, there's the five-year forecast, which is the numbers, that shows the previous three years of actual information. And it's, and it is just taking the general fund, but the general fund is the main operating funds of what we do as a school district. Sometimes you can skip then the heavy reading, but what the notes try to do is break down and do a fine detail of what has gone into not only the thinking, but as well as what are, what are behind those numbers? Staffing increases or decreases if there might have been something. I mentioned the insurance changes. Trying to put a number behind how that is impacting things and describing the trend that we've seen in insurance, just using that as an example. We provide some services, as we've talked about, through our ESC for different positions, trying to provide some detail. So all of those types of things and some commentary on really the, what has gone into those numbers is part of that. And again, I always appreciate the board giving feedback and telling me I'm doing a good job and all those pieces. But again, sometimes I just don't want terms to be lost on the hard work that I do and Angie does and just want to make sure that people know that we're trying to provide relevant and current information and want to continue that.
In the space of conversations around transparency and responsibility around finances, have you received any phone calls about like, "Hey, where can I find this?" Or has anyone in your office, to your knowledge?
Most recently, I did have a conversation with somebody that was asking for something actually different and we talked through where that information could be found. So from time to time, yeah, I do get a call of where things are.
I'm glad to hear that, thank you.
As a CPA for over 20 years, I just want to say that I've obviously seen tons of budgets, tons of financial information. Jeremy provides amazing detail and insight in what he provides to the board and what is available to the community. And you've always, always shown that you are, you know, willing to answer questions, willing to explain things that people don't understand. So thank you very much for that. I know it's something that you take very seriously and I, you know, I think you do a great job. So thanks for all that you're doing.
I appreciate that. But, and I'm just part of a team with this too. I mean, there are a lot of conversations that go on with Angie and I and how things are done, so. Again, just, I just wanted to make sure that, that community members know that that's available.
While we're on the subject, Jeremy, could you speak to kind of how our spending and financial process, budgeting appropriations, my role, your role, the board's role, and if that's typical for a school district? Obviously, you've worked as an auditor with other school districts and then also as an assistant treasurer in another district.
So our, I think what you're asking is so our budgeting process, there are various ways that budgeting can be done. We, we here at Big Walnut do a needs-based type of a budgeting where the buildings are providing what they believe is needed. And other districts that I've worked with or been in sometimes do more of a per pupil allocation type of a method and it's just there, do with, do with it as you please. It's a fairly common. And it's kind of a, an allocation method, if you want to say. What, coming into this, I, this job, I hadn't done needs-based necessarily, but I mean, it is, it is a comprehensive method of every building, every department comes and is presenting, "Hey, here's what I believe we need." And it varies every year. Sometimes there are different needs or initiatives, our new prairie run. There were new needs in, in that building for startup supplies and things like that. So a lot of detail goes into that. And then...
Just kind of our process on how the budget gets put into appropriations if the board approves and then how you and I approve daily expenditures and if that's typical for a school district.
Sure, yeah, so yeah, I mean, it's the, all of those inputs, the budget process, then does go into the different appropriations. And I mean, we're not just appropriating for the general fund, we're appropriating on our debt service, our capital improvements, and state and federal funds. State and federal funds as part of that, they basically were being told what those funds can be used within certain parameters. And then I think the Title I example was given earlier where it may not have checked all of the boxes, but there was a purpose behind that fit into the rules of Title I federal funding. So all of, all of those do go into the appropriation level. And then I believe the statute says that a board at the minimum appropriates those funds at the fund level.
And so for the community, that means that you are putting in, we're spending this much money on personnel, this much money on maintenance of this bill.
Correct. All of those pieces go into, at a, there's a lower, a more detailed level that we actually are looking at and tracking in the accounting system. And then Angie's correct, on a daily basis, we, requisitions against those appropriation lines that we're tracking are put into our accounting system. And then an approval chain going through to make sure that there are, some of the big terms, it's fresh for me right now because we're going through a financial, a state audit, financial audit. So always making sure that those controls are in place of, is it budgeted for? Is it a segregation of duties in the approval chains?
So can you give an example, if a principal has a teacher who needs a projector and they want to put in order for projector, what would that look like to get approved before it could get purchased?
Yeah, one, we would have to make sure that there is money appropriated in that budget line.
Which the board approves.
Which, at the fund level, at a higher level. Then the requisition would be put in, then that would go to a supervisor, the principal, to make sure that it's fitting within actual need for the building as well as a scope of what's our, what's our mission? Our mission is to educate students and provide a quality education. If something did not fit in that checkbox, then it has been, I've seen, and should be rejected. If it makes it to that level, then Angie is also looking at every PO that comes through to approve or deny. And again, there are times where she asks some clarifying questions, is this, what's going on with this? And if that makes it through all that process, then it becomes a purchase order and it's allowable to be spent.
What happens in your office to make it a purchase order though?
Outside of those other, those approval chains, then it's, there are times where I'm reviewing some of those pieces, but then that is converted into a purchase order that gets sent out then to not only the individual, but it also gets sent out to the vendor in many situations, either through the mail or electronically. We've tried to do a lot more electronically because it's quicker, more efficient, and more timely.
And thank you for your patience with explaining that. I have one last question. Is this typical for most school districts that this is how things are purchased?
I would say yes.
Okay, thank you.
That's, that's all I had unless there are other questions or comments.
There's nothing else for Jeremy? We'll go to board member items of interest and Sherry.
I just, I just really appreciate everyone who came in to speak today. We got a lot of information. I think it was really valuable information and, you know, I know it takes a lot of time and effort to put that together. And so thanks to everyone for their availability and, you know, cooperation in doing that to make sure that our community members, you know, understand all of, all of the work that goes into this and some of the things behind the scene. And thank you... And thank you to Kobe and everyone on the committee for putting together the, the tailgate last week. It was, it had this kind of family picnic vibe. It was, it was really cool to see everybody there. So.
Absolutely. Doug, anything for you?
I'll reserve.
Alrighty. Leanna, how about for you?
A couple of things. Just, I'd like to thank all the community members and staff members who, outside of normal work hours, attended and participated in the academic advisory committee meeting and the pandemic response committee meeting over the last week. I participated in both of those. And I guess I feel like both of those meetings, we were discussing controversial topics. Sex education and pandemic. And in both of those cases, all of the individuals who attended were kind of given norms at the beginning. That all of us are coming to this with good intentions and that all of us ultimately have the best interests of our students at heart. And in those conversations, I did not hear one raised voice. I did not hear anyone shouting at someone that you're not doing this. It was all in a sense of community of what are we going to do that's best for our kids? And I just really appreciated that. Knowing that, you know, what, what we see, what we hear, what we read, just that still a group of adults can come together and be kind to one another, be respectful of differing opinions. And, um, that was just very refreshing. And part of the success of that, I think, goes to the staff and the way in which they structured these meetings. And just Angie, kudos to you. I received an email last night from Mr. Fuji and I, I don't know whether you were copied on that, but, um, I, I wished he'd been here today to share with you just our overall impressions of just how well our district staff coordinated those meetings to ultimately have successful outcomes. And I just really appreciate that because at no point in time of those two, two and a half hour meetings, did I ever think, wow, this is a big waste of my time. And just felt like we were kept on task. We were provided with good information. And I feel like in the end, we are going to come out with results that we can present to this community that are community-based responses to issues we're dealing with in our, within our school district. So thank you. The other thing is I'd like to thank all of the volunteers who made this year's Big Nut Strut a success. I was there Sunday afternoon and, um, as usual, that was a very nice event. So I think that's all this morning. Thank you.
Could I just say thank, because she thanked me and the team, but specifically I'd love to give a, a shout out to Annie and Kate because they put together, um, a lot of the, uh, activities that we did to make that flow so well. So appreciate their leadership with both of those meetings as well and the rest of our team. So thank you.
Thanks. And I have a thank you that I want to share to our, for our teachers and all of our staff, but I'll hold on to that so some of them can actually see it because hopefully they're busy right now. So I'll save that for, uh, next Thursday. We'll go to public participation on item nine. This is a meeting of the Board of Education and Public for the purpose of conducting school districts' business and is not considered a public community meeting. It's a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. Please reference criteria for public participation, which is attached to the agenda. And Jeremy, how many do we have this afternoon, this morning? Almost that afternoon?
We have seven.
We've got seven. Good deal. Alright, so if you are returning or if you haven't joined us before, just a quick run through the process. Jeremy will call you up. You'll have three minutes to make a comment to the board. I'll just kind of keep the time here, give you kind of a high sign if you're at 30 seconds and then kind of give you another one around three minutes. And appreciate everybody keeping it right at around that three minutes. And Jeremy, when you're ready, we can get going.
Our first speaker is Lad Dilgard of 3923 Shake Bark Trail and speaking regarding masks.
Yesterday, we learned that one in six kids in the U.S. was obese. Here we are talking about juvenile cases of COVID. Since 78, uh, 78% of COVID deaths are in obese patients, maybe we should discuss that a little bit more. Our last meeting, we discussed the estimated 80 to 90 cumulative cases in our district and associated quarantines. Board is very concerned that although the cases make up less than 2% of all students, we are outpacing last year in other school districts. One board member said although masks admittedly don't work, we needed to do something. Another board member said he wasn't qualified to understand various studies regarding masks. Another asked how many quarantined children end up falling ill, which we couldn't tell him. A member said she was very worried and concerned, but of what, we are not sure. Was it children falling ill and dying or teachers? We're not sure. But despite this lack of depth in data, we slapped harmful and worthless masks on kids with zero risk. We didn't vote on masking K through six teachers or explain why we're masking just K through six kids. We didn't specify how we determine if this action was successful, the types of masks allowed or how teachers would manage compliance. We just did it. Tuesday's COVID dashboard showed 150 cumulative cases or 3.5% of students, 21 active cases. What if tomorrow, every single child in our district suddenly had the virus? 4,700 cases overnight. To many, that sounds horrifying, but here's how it'd play out. 3,800 or over 80% would have no symptoms. Most, in fact, 99.99% would have mild cold-like symptoms. And unless there was a severe underlying health issue, very few would need medical attention. That's the facts. Zero would die, zero would need a ventilator. But because of panic conditioning, some still believe a positive test case means a greater than 50% chance of being hospitalized and a 40% chance of dying. In fact, chances of dying are like getting struck by lightning if you're under 75 and for children, it's infinitesimal. About 500 people under 19 have died with COVID in 18 months versus 3,300 who die each and every year in car accidents. Sheila mentioned that there was two in Ohio who've died since the beginning. That's one more than the number of kids who have died getting stuck in chimneys because their school was closed and he was out fooling around. Our solution has been to mask little kids, which is analogous to this. There's a small ratio of students in car accidents. The accidents weren't deadly and no one got hurt, but in theory, they could have been. In response, we make all elementary students wear bicycle helmets around school and on the playground. But these aren't protective helmets. These are shower caps and hairnets because actual bike helmets would be expensive. We do it and we feel good. There's no science, but we do something. Masks in schools offer the same protection as wearing a shower cap all day. In Florida in September, the cases dropped 79% in mask optional school district and 77% in those with mask mandates. 79 to 77, no difference. We're all for keeping little kids safe, but let's do what works. What works, like teaching them to wash their hands and eat right and get fresher and exercise.
Thank you. And just before you call the next one up, I just want to remind everyone that all of our meetings are streamed. So if they want to see all of those board comments, they can see them in their full, full and complete context. Go ahead, Jeremy.
Next is Annette McMurray. Next will be Mindy Penkey of 70944 Sage Creek regarding pandemic response results.
Good morning. I decided to speak at the last minute, so, and I received a C minus as well, but in public speaking. So I will do my best to be as articulate as I can here. First, I want to, um, say that I was at the pandemic response committee meeting and I walked out very frustrated because I was probably one of only two people that didn't want to continue to mask our K through six kids. The first question that we were asked was, should we, and I'm, don't quote me because I'm just, you know. Can you make a light pulse here, please? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, the first question we were asked was basically, should we continue or not continue to keep masks on our K through six kids? At my table, I was the only one who said no. We were told to keep the discussion simple, to not get into things like whether masks work or don't work. So efficacy, um, whether they're a health hazard, just basically just keep it simple. Let's not go down a rabbit hole, basically. Since the majority vote at my table was no, there was really not a whole lot of room for discussion. I, I spent hours researching efficacy, health hazards, learning difficulties when people are wearing masks in the classroom. We were then given some statistics, um, about cases. And when I broke down, I, I think it's kind of deceiving when you see these graphs and you see all these numbers, but when you really break them down into percentages and you really analyze them, the numbers seem high, but actually only 1.8% of our cases were, as at that day, she had given us those numbers, were children. The majority being ages 10 through nine, and I think kindergarteners and through sixth grade is what? Five through nine? So most of our cases are 10 through 19. In addition, there's very, it was reiterated and I think Sheila did a good job of that today, that there's no spread. There's hardly any spread in schools at all. The district does a great job of making sure that the kids who are in class together, they go to lunch together. So there's not a whole lot of spread in, in the community. Most of it's outside of the classroom. I want to respectfully disagree with Mrs. Lee. I don't feel like the committees represent the community. If I am one of the only ones in there, who's saying, no, we need to take these masks off these kids, then I don't feel like these, this committee represented the community. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Next is Melissa Andrelonis of, did I get it? 7590 Lawton Street.
Thank you. It's Andrelonis, so you did, you did pretty well. Good morning. My name is Melissa Andrelonis. I'm speaking for the first time here today because of the ongoing discussion in our community regarding critical race theory. I keep hearing from our board that there's no examples of this having occurred in Big Walnut schools. But after the experience I had with our daughter last year in the fifth grade virtual learning program, I disagree. Last year, excuse me, our 10-year-old was led through a very divisive lesson regarding race. I stopped in my tracks as I walked past her on her Chromebook and heard the teacher explaining that parents of black children must teach their children differently about police officers than parents of white children do. She explained that police officers sometimes treat black people differently than white people. She singled, sorry, she singled out the black students in the class, called on them by name and asked if their parents had had the talk with them yet. When one student brought up Black Lives Matter protests, the teacher praised him for protesting and told the students she would also be going to these protests too. She told the students, we still have a lot of work to do. Whether the teacher specifically labeled this as CRT or not, the ideas presented are some of the very ideas contained within critical race theory. My daughter absolutely loves this teacher, so her words carried a lot of weight with her. She was very confused by this lesson. We've taught our children to judge people by their character, not by what they look like. We, sorry. My daughter had never considered that these classmates were different from her until it was specifically pointed out. After I tried to explain this to her, she said, but mom, doesn't my teacher know that made us feel more different and separate from each other? Everyone felt so awkward when she was asking them those questions. My husband called the administrative office to report this and he was transferred to Jen Young, who was the curriculum director at the time. She told my husband he was not the only parent sharing these types of concerns and that it would be addressed. So we can call it CRT, we can call it DEI, whatever we call it, that's not appropriate for school. And this happened to my child in Big Walnut. It's not a teacher's job to instruct our children on how to believe, what to support, what to protest, especially on such a controversial and political issue. I think what we all need to understand is just because a school district doesn't explicitly say they're teaching CRT, okay, I'll try. Thank you. It's not in the state standards or it's not in the curriculum. That doesn't mean the poisonous ideology of CRT is not creeping into individual classes and lessons. This thinking is so divisive and it pits our children against each other based on their race. This is not what's best for our students or our community. It's not easy to stand up here and say negative things about a school district we've loved so much, but continuing to pretend it's not happening isn't the answer. Acknowledging that it is happening even if in isolated events and correcting it for the sake of all our children is. Thank you.
Since, since we're kind of topical.
If I could address that. First of all, thank you. And I, I am aware of that situation because Mrs. Young. I'm here. Mrs. Young did fill our team in on that. It was not a teacher, it was actually a tutor who is no longer with us. We did address that situation. I think that you make a really important point though. Um, when we talk about that the district isn't endorsing CRT, certainly we have hundreds of staff members. And sometimes things get said with, with an intent or without an intent. I will tell you, we've had a handful of situations like that. And when we've been made aware of them, we have addressed them. And I think that's a really important distinction because just like in, in your jobs, when you're dealing with lots and lots of employees, certainly we don't have 100% control over our employees all the time. And with the virtual piece, it did give us an opportunity to get some of that feedback from parents. And again, I can tell you that specific situation was addressed. That person no longer works here.
Can I respond? I appreciate that very much. And I, I think if we had been informed of that, then.
Well, and.
Well, I, I understand.
That's fair. And sometimes with HR issues, we're not able to do that, especially at the time it's occurring. But I just want you to know that when we're made aware of things now, um, and, and yes, I was appalled by what I was told was said during that lesson and exactly what we're talking about. There are other times when we get a variety of versions of things. And so, um, things get legs that maybe are not the only version of, of the story. So we do investigate those and, um, I'll tell you, Mark Cooper, sitting back there, our assistant superintendent who handles HR, does a lot of that. And whether it's, um, a case where we have students who are harassing other students with racial slurs, and we do have that happen in our schools, that's something that Mark looks into. Whether it's a teacher making an inappropriate comment, whether with a malicious intent or not, that's something that often will make its way to Mark and that we look into. So it's not something that we're going to put out a big announcement on, especially if it's a disciplinary issue with, with a staff member or another student because of privacy. But I, I want you to know, we're not saying that things don't happen. I know everybody wants to keep putting up the picture from a student middle school project last year during advisory. Um, and, and just to add a little to that, because that keeps getting put out there as why we're teaching CRT, that was an activity that some students who were, um, in the minority race, who were being harassed by peers, wanted to do something to try to make people understand how they were feeling and to have some dialogue around that. So that was the intent behind that. Certainly, once we saw that that term was used, we had a conversation. Mark actually put out an email to the entire staff and said, hey, even with good intentions, we can't throw out terms like white privilege with no context because people are very sensitive to that and kids don't understand what the intent is there. So I guess I just want to reiterate that yes, things do happen, like they do everywhere in society, in any school district. What I continue to stand by is we are not promoting that. And when things are brought to our attention, we address them. And that's, I guess, what I would like to, I appreciate what you had to say. I, I think you're right. And we did address it. So thank you.
And I appreciate that too. And if I knew that, I wouldn't have given that whole speech.
You know, when you have thousands of kids and hundreds of staff members and you have privacy, you can't just put all that out. I, I mean, I wish it were that simple sometimes. Believe me, it would be nice. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Sure.
Parliamentary inquiry. Normally during public participation.
Yes.
The audience is instructed not to address the board for questions.
Well, I don't know.
Have we changed the rule?
I don't know that she addressed the board for questions. I think she brought up an issue or a concern. And considering the intensity of this topic and the issue, I thought it was important for the record to be set completely on that. And so I made the choice to make that decision there to allow the superintendent to address that. It was a perfectly legitimate concern. It's something that could be clarified right now. And so, yeah, I made the choice to do that. Jeremy? Jeremy.
Next is Sheila Rechner of 12842 Chambers Road and speaking on House Bill 244.
I wanted to start off by saying thank you and I appreciate all of you that came here this morning to share your professional opinions. I have been following some discussions of this community and this is especially important to me because I have been verbally attacked and called a white supremacist, a leader of the KKK, and anybody that knows me knows this is simply not true. Recent meetings of concerned parents, hearing stories of divisive racial political ideologies, equity, inclusion, that are or have been happening in our schools, like for instance, a group of students meeting at the high school that excludes specific races. I support minorities, I think these are great things. I do not think this should be happening on Eagle time. I also have heard of board members being elected, or of certain board members, if they get elected, they will cut mental health specialists, specials, aides, remove IEPs, and that is simply not true. I believe anyone that's running for school board cares about our students, that there are only different agendas. To make such assumptions, spreading rumors and false accusations is embarrassing to our community. I am also looking forward to hearing more about the information that comes from our pandemic planning committee as these, as the results of this committee, I'm sure will heavily impact our students, teachers and community. In closing, I wanted to touch on a comment that Dr. Fagan made, that professionals know their boundaries and know to stay in their lanes. I would disagree with that. I have a recent personal experience with this and a lifetime experience, you know, as a professional. And as a parent, I do not stand up here opposing or disrespecting anybody that thinks differently than I do, but as parents, I think it is our responsibility to ask hard questions and questions, what in question is what is going on in our schools and making sure that there are not one certain agenda being pushed by rehearsed information. I would like to touch on the House Bill 244 that was set into law yesterday. I'm going to recite a takeaway from Bricker and Eckler, which is our legal counsel for our school board. If House Bill 244 is approved into law, Ohio Public Schools and Universities will not be permitted to mandate students and employees to receive any of the currently available COVID-19 vaccines. Furthermore, public schools and universities would not be permitted to require those who are unvaccinated to take infection control measures, including masking, testing, quarantine, which are different than those measures required of persons who are vaccinated. Schools and universities subject to the law will have to reconsider their plans for vaccination mandates and differential infection control policies encouraged by public health agencies, including the CDC. They should consider whether it's necessary to put back into place general infection control measures previously set aside when it was permissible to require those who are unvaccinated to follow different rules. The law does not affect the ability of schools and universities to request voluntary disclosure of vaccination status or implement one-size-fits-all control measures. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next is Karen Ambrose of 5021 Plantation.
Mine was on curriculum, but again, listening to everything, I feel like I'm going to be all over the place like I was at one of the meetings. Curriculum. I would like to know if I can have every copy of any survey that's being taken in the classroom, either written or verbally. I think as a taxpayer, I should be able to have those survey questions that's been being asked to my grandchildren, okay? Also, the principal's gone, but I don't know how I ever got through going to two to three schools a year, from the time I started school till I was a sophomore in high school. Raised in a home that was not perfect, but has had faith since a small child given to me by the prayers of my grandma. Okay? There's a missing link. Is Dr. Fagan still here? Okay. I'd like to know the percentage of mental health people or people that get counseled that have faith in their home as a missing link. There's no way the church, the schools can teach faith because of separation of church and faith, or church and what is it?
Satan.
Yeah. There's a missing link. Angela, Angie, in your, you know, the paper, I can't think of the name of it right now, that you put out. It was so sad to me because I know you're frustrated. The teachers are frustrated. You're doing things that you weren't taught to do. You didn't become teachers to counsel, to physical, do everything that you're doing. Every child is fed now by the state. The government is too much in your job. I don't know what you can do. I'm wondering if you're really, really giving us what you're giving us from your heart or what you're mandated to do? I don't know. I don't know. You know, when the principal talked about, now they're going to have to teach the kids where the cafeteria is, where to park, where, I'm like, my biggest worry was, can I remember my combination to this new locker? Simple. It's so emotional to me because the government, I don't know, we're in a spiritual battle, okay? I don't know what you can do in your homes. I don't know. It's faith. It's a missing link. There's lots of links. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
A missing link, and you're not going to be able to fix it with all this talk. You're not.
Thank you.
Of all the surveys, verbally and written? Thank you.
Just as a clarifier on that, if you could actually make a request for that, I can get you a form.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Next.
You might have more forms than one because.
We've got a standard form that they can be used, yes. Next is Ms. Gretchen Hofer of 14037 Centerburg Road. And this is on Centero.
I'm here, I'm here this morning. Can you guys hear me?
No.
I'm here to address the board again and I appreciate the CEO who's come from Centero. I also appreciate the people here from the Health District. I appreciate the board putting together the people to support where you're at. I do appreciate that. However, when I listen to the, you know, people, when people have to say that lies are being said, you know, regarding Centero, I personally know the family whose son recorded that in the Westerville Schools as the CEO of the organization. To say that that's a lie is very offensive because this person's not lying. Okay? So when we talk about lies, if somebody's saying that there's lies going on and you're justifying what is said under your watch, Brad, the board, under your watch, humble People are bringing this to your attention because we're concerned, just like when the district calls me with concerns regarding my non-perfect children. I, as a parent, need to take that to my children and I need to find out what the deal is. I need to ask questions. We're not attacking you. We're not attacking the board. We're asking you guys questions. I know that Mindy Myers is here, I know that Angie Hamburg is here. This was, this Centero organization, your organization, was brought to you, Mindy, and it was brought to the district. It was brought by my sister years ago, but it came into our district. So the comment that Dr. Fagan, highly educated Dr. Fagan, I appreciate it. I appreciate all the degrees that we have in the room, but where is our common sense? Where is our concern for children? I don't know what we mean by inspire and guide. What are we trying to inspire and guide our children? My mom just asked for the surveys. Your organizations that are being brought into our schools, into our children's minds, the Health Department, four years ago, the 200-question survey given to my children, dark questions, 200 of them. I've been involved in these board meetings in my time with five kids in the district two times. I showed up when my oldest, who's now 20, was in the fifth grade, when the auditorium at the high school was filled because our board and our district was trying to figure out what to do with cell phones. And guess what? It was a waste of time because the board had their, they had their mission, you guys, it wasn't you guys, but the board surrendered to the fact that we could not control cell phones in the school district. So we surrendered it. And here we are. I remember being the last person to speak at that board meeting and I said, "Why are we going to surrender to something that is not good for our children when the data in China shows the kids in China have struggled from technology?" And I asked the board then, "Please do not surrender cell phones in the classroom to our children." And guess what? The board had already made their decision. You guys have stated a great claim, bringing all of the executives, the CEO, the Health Department in here to support your claim, to support the pandemic relief committee. You guys have brought all your people in, but you haven't surveyed me, the parent. I haven't gotten one, I haven't ever gotten to opt my kids out.
If you could please wrap up.
Okay. So I have asked the principals of my schools, I should not be calling the school, having to figure out what you are going to put in the minds of my children. My freshman who just filled out, who just was sat in a suicide class, he came home disturbed, sad. You identify who those students are and you help those students. Do not corrupt the minds of my children.
Thank you.
Do not corrupt the minds of my children with your Health Department in this district.
You're well over four minutes now. I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Okay. So I would, so I would like to know, and I've asked about it, I've sent emails to this board, I've gotten no response back. What are we paying for Centero?
We're not paying anything for Centero.
Okay, so it's a grant?
Yes.
So the survey that was given by the Health Department, you guys are allowing these surveys to come into our students' classrooms?
We're coming up on five minutes now.
To create your claim.
Take your seat.
To create your claim for your grant money.
We get three minutes.
For your grant money.
Everybody else gets.
Who's everybody else? Everyone in public comments?
These that you bring in to teach us.
They're.
We only get three minutes and they get.
Because they're part of the business items of this meeting. The time for public participation within our policy is three minutes.
That's unfair.
I'm sorry you feel that way, but it's the same, it's the same guy.
Barbary.
Okay.
Okay. Brad, I will leave the podium now. It's been asked, I've asked the principals, I've asked the district, I spoke to the mental health director of our district, asking for the board to stop the Panorama survey. The ties are deep and nobody knew about it. None of you knew what affiliates the Panorama survey. I looked at the questions.
Okay.
They're not happy.
Thank you. We've heard your feedback.
Okay.
Thank you.
So why don't I get, why do I not get it from the district? Why am I not getting this? Why am I not being told beforehand what you're going to put in front of my kids from a mental health perspective? The district.
The next person is.
Okay. My last question to the district is this. If my children are not 18 years and older.
Everyone else has kindly followed the procedure and process. Can you please follow the same process everyone else has followed? I have given you ample latitude well beyond your three minutes.
Okay.
Could you please respect the time of everyone else?
My last question is, if I, if the children in this district of mine are not 18 years and older, how does the mental health organizations in this district have access to my children without my permission?
Thank you.
Written permission. I will look forward to that information.
The next, the next person is Renee Breen of 37 Lutz Avenue, also on Centero.
Thank you, members of the board. I would like to speak on Centero also. I was the person seven years ago who came to our school board and showed the true light of what Centero is all about. It is disheartening to me that Mrs. Rinaldi came here today and said that what Centero has gone through over the last, I don't know, year and how this is not true. It is true. When I heard about this seven years ago, I called Westerville School, I asked the principal who was in Mary Culler's class on April 25th, and the person at the school said that speaking to the class was Betsy Lisca who works for a company named Centero, 1560 Fishinger Road. I will, at the end of this meeting, I would love to talk to you about that. Mrs. Fagan said that Centero is no longer doing their comprehensive sex ed. If this is true, it's an answer to prayer and thanks be to God. I would like to know from Centero directly, I did not hear Mrs. Rinaldi say that that program is no longer with Centero. My whole point in bringing up Centero from the beginning, I saw it in the July Eagle Examiner. I was shocked to see Centero is in our schools. Centero's been in our schools at least for four years now counseling kids. I'm not standing here saying that kids don't need help, they don't need counseled, but an organization that stands for what I listened to seven years ago, I wouldn't put my kids in front of that company. I feel that we owe our kids more than that. I would like to talk about parental rights, transparency and involvement. We keep talking about all this mental health. It's important. I don't know that there's any kid in our school or any person in this room right here that doesn't have mental health issues after what we've gone through, depression, anxiety, all of it. We keep talking about treating it, but we're not talking about the root. My mother's Karen Ambrose, who was just up here and spoke, full disclosure, my sister was the last one that was up here. We need transparency. We need the parental involvement. When, when you guys are so excited about all these surveys, the Panorama survey, the survey that just went out in the health class, but yet you don't come out, you don't send a survey to us parents asking us about masks. With today's technology and knowing the suicide rates and all of the rest of the stuff these kids are suffering through, how about taking the time to get to the root, come to the parents, send us a survey and say, "Would you mind talking to your kids about this stuff?" My sister's point of these kids are under 18. I feel like our school district just went into the minds of every single child from a counselor's standpoint, albeit it was on a computer. But we just asked all of our kids in the school district a bunch of very serious questions, feelings questions. It said that in the survey that the kids are going to remain anonymous, but when we just open the minds of these kids to all these issues and there's nobody that's guiding them or counseling them, including their parents, because we don't know what the questions are.
If you could please wrap up quickly.
No, I'll be.
Thank you.
But us parents have rights and we deserve the right to know what our kids are seeing. I have been paying attention to my kids' health class. There was nothing in the health class on Schoology. It talked about how the health, or the helpline was coming in, it had, it said nothing about the fact that our kids were going to be surveyed. I asked for the survey of my child and I was told yesterday that that has been shredded.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that was our last one.
Can I speak for Annette? Can I take her? It will literally be two minutes. Jackie Burton.
Jackie Burton.
Would you be willing to fill out a form?
Yep. I'll fill in, just to be real quick. So Jackie Burton, 3249 Brookview Drive. So I just wanted to bring up real quick about masking these kids. So we talk about mental health. My kid, when I, I didn't tell him he was going to have to be masked until the Friday before. He was so upset and we talk about mental health. I hate wearing masks every single day, but I do it because it's part of my job. Sorry. These kids don't want to be wearing them and they're being taught that this is normal. They can't see our smiles, they can't see our expressions. Our little kids can't read people's faces, so they can't form these emotional bonds and connections. It is, I believe COVID, trust me, I believe COVID, but we're not thinking, suicide is so high right now, the fact that my little kid, who's seven years old, has to find out about suicide and I have to have conversations with my 10-year-old because it's serious. And I, we need to be talking, this is constricting. We can't form these emotional bonds and this is causing people to be depressed, anxiety. My 10-year-old, I got, you know, I got an exemption, but he walked out of the principal's office and took it off. He's like, "I can't do this anymore." But my seven-year-old cried. He hated it. And every day until I got that exemption, he was so upset every time he came home. He hates it. He chewed. He chews the inside of his masks, he has holes in them, he spits in them, well, it's not good for his health. I told him he's going to be like the cats spitting up fur balls, but it's going to be a cloth ball. But these are the things that these little kids are experiencing, and they are not experiencing life. They are experiencing restrictions and shelterness and no emotion. We can read people's faces because we know when the eyes raise, somebody's probably smiling on or there. They can't, and that scares me. Developmentally, everything is going to be delayed because we are restricting them. Thank you. I'll give you this to you.
Thank you. Okay. That brings him to item number 10, to schedule the next board meeting, our next scheduled board meetings, October 21st, right here at 6:30 PM, and that'll be streamed as well. And finally, that brings us to item 11, to adjourn. Have a motion, please.
So moved.
Thank you, Liana, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Sheri. Jeremy, when you're ready. Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider? Yes. Thank you all for attending, have a good day.